Has anybody heard from Luke yet? How about we call the meeting to order because it is a long agenda? And hope that by the time we're done um reviewing the um reading through the agenda um. We have the rest of the team join us, okay? Because right now it's easily over two hours and a half. Alright. Okay, so I am calling the meeting to order. Just a virtual work session Tuesday, May seventeen twenty twenty. Call to order at seven oh three. Roll call, Jared Stoffus.
Here.
Valerie Woodall.
Here.
Um, and I'm here. So that gives us a quorum. Okay, alright, so item number two, review of the agenda. Um, Jared, how are you feeling to read it?
Okay, yeah, I can.
Alright. Water, go ahead.
One second. Take a drink real quick.
Final last words.
Number one, number one, call to order. Number two, review of agenda. The mayor and council review the agenda for the meeting and adding the leading topics of interest for discussion. Number three, presentation by Teaching to Fish CDC. The mayor and council will receive a presentation from Teaching to Fish CDC. Number four, mayor and council priorities for FY twenty twenty-three, twenty minute, sorry. The mayor and council discuss their priorities for FY twenty-three. Number five, Gateway CDC Artist Support Proposal. Gateway CDC will present a proposal, the mayor and council on providing funding to artists to own their own studios through the Rowan Corridor. Number six, youth council discussion. Number seven, Potts Hall Welcome Center Discussion. The mayor and council will discuss options for financing and issue a request for proposal for redeveloping Potts Hall. Number eight, review of committees. The mayor and council review the committees. Number nine, ARPA discussion and update. Number sixteen, the mayor and council discuss the status of projects. Number ten, introduction of ordinance. Five dash twenty twenty-two, amending chapter twenty-four boards, committees and commissions of the code of ordinances of the city of Mount Rainier. To add title three, police review and advisory board and repealing ordinance number eight twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, sorry. The mayor and council have an introduction of ordinance oh five twenty twenty-two. Presentation of April twenty-six twenty twenty-two budget work session and public hearing for traffic calming devices in zone residential parking. The mayor and council, city council, were received April twenty-six twenty twenty-two budget work session and public hearing for traffic calming devices and zone residential parking minutes from the clerk. Number twelve, adjournment.
Thank you so much. The only change I will ask is for number ten. Is introduction of ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty-two. That ordinance has already been passed. It will be discussion of ordinance zero five twenty twenty-two. Um, that's what's going to be, not introduction, because it's already an ordinance. And what is gonna, what is being proposed is to edit, to reflect the 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 new law that's coming into effect so that we could have our advisory board or PD. Okay, see if you could make that change. Uh, Valerie, Jared, any edits, edits, additions to this agenda, please let me know. Valerie, first.
Um, I think it's good.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jared.
Uh, no additions.
Alright.
Oh, Luke is on.
Okay, um, oh, Luke didn't even write his last name today. Okay, so make a note that our council member Luke is is present as well. And Jimmy had had informed the the whole collective that he was going to running a little bit behind because he was in another meeting. So as soon as he joined, will will the record reflect that he's also in the meeting as well specifically for um? You know, this is not a voting meeting. It is a work session. So um, there's um, just to be fully aware of that. Alright, so thank you so much, Jared, for reading that.
Mayor, I do, sorry. I, where is it? I just want to be mindful of the folks here from the Gateway CDC to present and seeing where they are on the agenda. I think they should go.
They're number five?
I think it would be helpful to put them above the conversation on the mayor and council priorities so that they're able to get out of here. Before we start talking our heads off about what's more nuts.
Uh, that'll be fine. We can move up to number four on council, the Yosef, that change. Jared?
Absolutely.
Yes. Well, Luke, obviously. Okay, so they're gonna be one.
Yes.
Hi, Jimmy, you see. Uh, moving on to I, so they're gonna be number, item number five is gonna become the new number four. Can you make that change, Melissa? Before we move on to the agenda. And council, just to remind you of the rules for council as well as three minutes, the first round maximum. You don't have to use three minutes. The second round is two and the last round is one. Okay, so that we keep on track. This is already um closer to a three hour agenda. Um, and that is if we don't go over by not even a minute. Okay, so please keep that in mind. So as Melissa's making the change on the screen. Can I have um, do we have the members of Teaching to Fish currently present here in the meeting?
Yes, mayor, we are here. Thank you very much.
Okay, so lem, let me see. Give me one second. Okay. Alright, perfect. Um, this is Mr. Clarence Crawford.
Yes.
So um, thank you for being here. So mayor council receive a presentation for Teaching to Fish. We do have a presentation in our package and here's in front of us. You have twenty minutes allocated. That includes question and answers from the from both the council and the community. So it's about, if you could keep it to under ten minutes if possible, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you so much. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Want to thank Mayor Benitez, members of the city council, uh, city manager for the opportunity to come and talk to you. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) ministry. Our focus is on battling poverty, hopelessness and violence by creating opportunities, opportunities for people to become successful entrepreneurs and successful employees. Want to just quickly acknowledge our team. We have Jesse Clay, Lee Edavon, Dan Blair, Mark Lawrence and John Dedwiler. Um, our bios are in the package, so you can look at that at your leisure. Want to just acknowledge, uh, we've taken time to look at your website. I'm familiar with Mount Rainier as a child. Uh, I had an uncle, great uncle who was a town manager and treasurer in North Brentwood. And um, for a good portion of my early years, we were in that community, I think just about every week. So it's good to be back. We've been doing some work with um, the town of North Brentwood. So it's again, good to be back. We took a look at your website. We were very impressed with what we saw in the area of economic development. Your entrepreneurial scholarship program, we're very interested in that area as well. The million dollar incentive program. We also worked with the town of North Brentwood on a facade improvement program. We managed that program for them during the COVID crisis. We're going to move quickly into our presentation. The first thing we'd like to just show you is a video. Uh, you'll need to do that in, um, and we'll do a quick video then. Uh, Mark Lawrence will talk about our strategy. Uh, John Dedwiler will talk about the workforce development. I'll close by talking about roles and responsibilities and next steps, and we should be done in ten minutes or less. If you could run the video. Can't hear the sound. And we're not able to hear the sound. Why don't we just stop right here and I'll just tell you. This is Ms. Joy Williams. She is from Colmar Manor. She was recommended by Colmar Manor. She is currently a participant in the Washington Gas Utility Program. Invite you to listen to the video. This is a young lady who recognizes that she's bumped her head a few times, but it's now time to get serious. She's currently in the program. This is John. We'll talk more about the program. She's doing extremely well and we're very proud of her. This is a nice testimony of what uh, we believe that you will also see uh, from your residents. At this time, I'd like to move right in to allow Mark Lawrence from Incubate to talk about our strategy. And then John will then talk about workforce uh, training and the cost. And then I will, as I said, close with roles, responsibilities and next steps. Mark?
Thanks, Clarence, and thanks everyone for having us. So so when we looked at this program and we were deciding about it, you know that, you know, talent is everywhere, but opportunities are not. And when we looked at the whole infrastructure, we said, how do we take a system level view? Because we know decimated by the pandemic, accelerated by, you know, social justice issues. There's a lot of things around workforce and sort of economic mobility that we really need to pay attention to. And what we said in our strategy is that we have to look at all these things equally, right? Because, you know, if we look at a system, all has equal weighting. And it's really around four basic things. Understanding the present and future jobs within a community and within a region, right? Because we know that there's commute that we have to deal with. Identifying and positioning talent based on that understanding. Look for ways to reduce the outward commute. And then also, the fourth part of that is supporting and creating more entrepreneurs. And we know that when we talk about entrepreneur, we only talk about entrepreneur mindset, right? Because we know entrepreneurship, small business development is a challenge. But at least starting with the innovation entrepreneur mindset, we believe that we can drive transformative outcomes within local communities. So if we go to the next slide. How we think about looking at this is in three phases. Phase one, workforce. Phase two, focusing on entrepreneurs and the small business. And then phase three, looking at connecting all of the anchor institutions and systems and tools within the community. And as we'll talk about more in this presentation, it's really two parts of that. You know, immediate job readiness skills to people who are in need of a job. So some of the soft skills and then provide them with on-ramps, opportunities to upscale, getting more stable skill for employment. And then assisting them in doing that, because we feel that there are a lot of workforce development programs out there. But we like to take the cohort model and add the community development, sort of case management approach to doing that. And then the second phase, which will launch probably, you know, third or fourth quarter, is looking at entrepreneurs and small businesses specifically in some of the hardest industries. What do they need to, you know, compete or come back or return? And then the last piece of that is, okay, now that we've focused on the talent, we focus on the businesses. How do we identify specific industry sectors or segments that we can build communities around? If we can go to the next slide. So what does that really look for workforce? Now, we've talked about this, um, you know, I talked about it briefly. But in more detail, it's really around talent and career readiness, right? There's a lot of the soft skills. When we talk to employers within the region or, you know, even across the nation. If people come with some basic skills, the technology and all the other things can be taught. That can be on the table, you know, just sort of some of the soft skills like attentiveness, being responsive, being assertive, being able to present yourself. Being able to conduct and pass an interview. We feel that the career career readiness piece of this needs to be emphasized. So what we would do is survey residents, unemployed, disconnected, dislocated, and then really connect them to the training and matching services. And through doing that, we'll understand that, you know, some residents might be able to leapfrog into the future work. But there's job entry ways now that they can get employed and get back on their feet. And it's helped to teach them responsibility, help teach them getting back and what's being a part of a workforce. And then for the ones that we upscale, those would be the ones that we know be ready for the future work um, skill sets, and then they would be ready and position themselves for jobs in the future. So next slide. I think this is what it what it looks like from a detailed perspective, right? So for career readiness, we do resume prep, interview prep, job readiness. We recommend that would be ongoing, in person, online, more the consultant advisory approach. Then we said specifically industry summary training opportunities, and my colleague John Dedwiler will get into that. We know that there's high demand in specific industries and we would like to provide a pipeline and open up the funnel for them. It would be utilities and construction. It would be healthcare. It would be hospitality and of course, information technology. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to John to give more details on those programs.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. It's a pleasure to be a part of this collaborative effort. So Mark has done a great job of sharing with you uh, these particular uh, opportunity, training opportunities in high demand sectors. And so as you see the screen here, each sector are primarily, uh, we look at the utility and construction. That is a sixteen week accelerated cohort model. And Joy is a part of that, uh, Washington Gas sponsored model as we speak. And so these individuals will be picked, be prepared and have received multiple certifications to pursue careers in the utility construction industry, the construction industry as a whole. But more importantly, they are now uh, career and job ready with these certifications, certifications that that they've earned. Uh, in addition to that, as Mark has stated, uh, we also have these additional pathways that are in a, an adaptive online self-paced training model where those who may be underemployed and have a job uh, that they absolutely, you know, have to have at the moment for uh, their livelihood. But they still have the ability to earn these multiple certifications within this pathway model. And so again, the information's on the screen, the salary ranges, uh, as you can see between fifteen to twenty-five dollars an hour. Uh, and then as we move down, you will see that um, it jumps up slightly to thirty-one dollars an hour within the IT sector. All of these particular pathways and uh, the certifications that are assembled can be earned uh, within a twelve month period. And so with that, uh, it's accelerated, adaptive, and uh, it is a a new model that is that is uh, exciting. And we would love to present that to the residents of your municipality. Next slide, please. So here's a quick snapshot of what the cost per person, uh, what it would look like. Um, as you see in the left-hand column, uh, there are many factors involved. There's tuition, books, material. Uh, we have scholarships available. Um, we factor in, uh, when you look at wraparound services and some of the barriers that prevent residents from being able to uh, successfully complete a program. You know, childcare, uh, transportation, uh, and then a stipend to assist during that time that they're with uh, the particular program. Um, and then we also have our fiscal agent fees as well as a total estimated cost. And so in the sake of, for the sake of time, uh, we're looking at a range of 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 three to five thousand within these particular industry sectors. And as you can see, we believe we've done a great job in capturing some of the key barriers that prevent residents from uh, successfully completing, or let's not even say complete, to even believe that they can um, become eligible and 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 participate in the program like this, um, if these other factors or barriers have not been addressed. And so um, I will close by saying that uh, Washington Gas has sponsored us and it's a great partner to this collaborative effort that we're sharing with you tonight. And we have other companies that are willing to support us. But what we're excited about with this opportunity with Mount Rainier is that uh, the gold is within the municipalities. And we believe that we, this model that we're sharing is a pathway for how we can uh, turn the page in the post-pandemic with our residents and help them be able to compete in the new economy.
Okay, so now bringing to the close, want to highlight the key roles and responsibilities for Teaching to Fish is proposing to do is to serve as the project manager, fiscal agent. And we will be the single point of contact. We will help prepare all of the marketing materials. We will accompany Mount Rainier and Mount Rainier leaders to community organizations and discussions. We'll plan and coordinate between the city and Prince George's Community College's team builders. We were very interested in team builders, not only because of the excellent record they have in providing training, but they also have a very strong relationship with employers. So people who successfully complete the job are given a very good opportunity to actually be employed. We didn't want to be involved with something where people are trained.
Check, sit down.
Can we please close our mics?
I'm sorry.
Right, alright.
Jimmy, I think you're on unmute. Jimmy, go on, go on mute.
Jimmy.
Jimmy Tarlo. Go on mute.
Sorry.
Great conversation.
That's right. We're fine. We can handle that. Uh, we will have.
I can. So I apologize for that.
So we would handle the disbursements. We are 501(c)(3) in good standing. Uh, we'll monitor the progress. We'll provide the status, the quarterly status reports. We understand the reporting that's necessary. Uh, Lee Edavon, who's a member of our team, is also the treasurer for Forest Heights, so we understand that. What we would be looking for from Mount Rainier in this partnership would be a single point of contact. We also need Mount Rainier to take the lead in recognizing, helping identify individuals who are ready. What we have found at Teaching to Fish and what John's organization have found at um, team builders is people who are referred by community organizations, by community leaders are far more likely to complete these programs than people who just respond to something they saw on social media. So we would ask that the city of Mount Rainier to actively be engaged in helping identify individuals working with community organizations. We are more than happy to accompany, to answer questions, but people know you. They don't know us yet. So it's really critical. You would play an incredibly critical role in making this work. And then you would provide the funding and that you would pay Teaching to Fish. We are proposing a pilot of one year uh, to give us both an opportunity to test the concept. We are working with the town of North Brentwood. We'll be starting with them uh, next month. As I mentioned, we have worked with them on facade improvement. Uh, there are also a couple of other uh, communities in this area that are also thinking about pursuing. With this brings to a close our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that mayor, council, uh, the public may have. Thank you very much for this opportunity. You know, it's you have a full schedule. Thank you again.
Thank you so much to your whole entire team for the presentation, the information. Going to go open it up to council. Um, I'm going to start with Jimmy Tarlo, we're one.
Uh, no, just thank you for the presentation. I apologize for not being on mute for a while.
It's quite alright, sir. We're fine.
Jimmy, what were you? I don't see a New York hat on you and I see a freshly ironed shirt.
I came from the, I came from the hill.
I was like, what's going on, New York? Uh, okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Jimmy. Luke?
I thank you all for presenting. Um, it just seems like an awesome program y'all are getting into there. Um, I have a question on recruitment. How how successful have you all been at just just recruiting people into these these types of programs? Or is this your, maybe I missed this, is this your first attempt to sort of recruit? Or do you have statistics on the the ability to recruit and how many people you guys can recruit into these programs? Maybe I missed that.
Sure, I can say that very quickly. Um, our recruitment uh, model, we are, I would easily say, uh, first of all, we have a method uh, of how we recruit. Uh, and it's through a bad, excuse me, a a series of information sessions. Um, and with that, I will tell you that um, it's well into between eighty-five and ninety percent as far as the residents that we recruit. We don't have problems um, identifying residents to participate because it's not a cast a wide net. Uh, there is a battery of assessments that the residents must complete in order to become eligible for the program because whether it's private funding, corporate, social impact funding. Um, again, we have to make sure that we've identified residents who are ready and they have a mindset to complete the program. And very quickly, and I'll move on, uh, And very quickly, and I'll move on, uh, just for uh the benefit of everyone, those battery of assessments is a mandatory information session, interview, completion of application, um, um, the testing assessment of math and reading, uh, their cognitive ability, uh, as well as background check, and there is a drug screening. So with all of those assessments, we review that information, and you know, based on our eligibility and the accelerated model, we then make that selection uh for residents to participate uh in the program.
Okay, so it's a, it, it's not just, and, and you, you guys are targeting, you know, not just somebody who necessarily really needs to find a job, but you're targeting somebody who not only really needs a job, but has some skills already. So it's sort of a medium market there. It's, it's what you guys are looking for.
Correct. And, and for those residents who have severe barriers, uh, we have a pathway or directions to other resources, whether that be the college or other uh quasi-government agencies that we can direct them to. But you're absolutely correct. We're identifying residents who are in need of employment. But as uh Brother Clarence stated, ideally working with a town such as uh Mount Rainier or North Brentwood or whomever, you already have identified residents who have prepared themselves, so to speak, and, and have made somewhat of an investment in themselves. And so those would be the ideal candidates that we would run, excuse me, accept and direct them through these various pathways and occupational trainings that we have assembled. And I'll close by saying the key to this is identifying high-demand uh, uh, careers uh, so that we can again prepare our residents to participate in the new economy and not uh have them trained for something that uh within six months, they're back in the same position again.
And it, it, thank you for that. I appreciate that. You know, one of the comments I'll, I'll make is, um, you know, looking at our city, I think a lot of the people who might, not everyone, but a lot of the people who maybe pay attention to these sorts of meetings or even vote, you know, they're not necessarily folks who, who, who may need this. I think where the, where probably the biggest demand is, is probably in our two large apartment complexes, Kaywood and Queenstown apartment complexes. And so if we were to do something like this, I think it would be really helpful to partner somehow with those apartment complexes so that those informational events can be marketed there, um, they can be held there, so they're easy to attend. Um, and you might be able to capture some folks who really need it. I mean, so, so most of the people who sort of vote and are engaged are single-family homeowners, um, which means they may already have a career of some sort. That's not everybody. That's, I'm just, you know, in, in, in sort of a, the, the, where in general the need is, is most likely in those apartment complexes. So if we were to go forward with something like this, that would be the, um, that would be where I think the need would be. What would be the estimated cost in, in total, the financial commitment you'd be looking to get from Mount Rainier?
So, uh, uh, I would, I would like Brother Clarence, uh, be, before you, before you respond to that, I don't, I don't, I don't want to miss the opportunity. Luke, may I call you Luke?
For sure, yeah.
Sure. So my colleague Mark is a, a part of the team. I don't want us to miss the opportunity of this collaboration, whereas you're absolutely correct. Uh, Kaywood and, and, and the other apartment complex that you're speaking of are great opportunities for what we would consider residents who may inherently have barriers to employment or careers. But I don't want to miss the opportunity for those, those residents that you spoke of who um have, may have a career, however, um, may be passionate about something else.
Oh, yeah.
There, there, there is another pathway that we've developed uh within our entrepreneurial pathway, but and again, um, software development. So there are many different avenues that we have already uh selected, assembled, and, and, and have those pathways that we can um present to make sure that we're covering the full spectrum of residents and their desires for either uh careers and or entrepreneurship. And so with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Brother Clarence.
No, yeah, and, and I'll just say, I, I wasn't meaning that, I, I wasn't meaning to sort of say that you would do that at the exclusion of somebody. It would, I think it would be an all, all on board. There, there are people everywhere who would need it that we would market to, so.
Can you guys hold on one second? We have run out of time two minutes ago, and I was just waiting for uh the presenter to like finish their sentence, but can allocate ten more minutes to this discussion?
Seconded.
Thank you so much, and please be aware that if I have to cut off, it's because we are, um, we need to allocate more time. Um, okay? So, okay, thank you. Uh, so thank you so much for those answers. Look for those questions as well. Um, so I got Jimmy, Luke, Valerie, and Jared.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I agree with the questions that Luke asked. Um, how many students do you typically think you'll have? I mean, you, you know, you said you don't want to cut it off at any point, but like, how many students do you anticipate having over the course of the year?
Sure. Um, on average, uh, it depends on the, the cycle, but our, our average class is anywhere between fifteen and thirty students per cohort. And uh, we, our, our highest number that we have served in one particular uh, uh, setting has been forty-six with multiple occupational tracks. But again, that is with the ability of being able to customize it, and I, again, I would defer that back to my team here. And we would make the decision of, uh, based on interest, what would be the best model? Um, again, for quality sake, it may be that we just accept fifteen to ensure that the proper attention is given to that fifteen. But hopefully I've answered your question.
Yep. Um, and then um, um, we have a large number of Spanish-speaking families here. Um, do you have bilingual capacity?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We have, uh, we have served uh the bilingual population, and uh we specifically uh conducted three cohorts over a two-year period in serving the Hispanic population, where we had translators in the classroom uh with co-instruction to ensure that those residents were successful. And out of um those, I'll just use one particular cohort, we had six uh residents who were uh Hispanic. Out of the six, four earned certifications, and we were able to place them within uh several property management companies within the region.
Great. Um, how long is the training period for?
Sure. This particular model uh has been in existence since two thousand eight. Uh, and it, and it has been uh scaled to meet the uh, uh, demand of the market. And the model in and of itself is, is designed to be nimble. Um, my colleague Mark shared with you uh phase two and three. The design specifically allows us to customize and respond to the marketplace, and that's why uh where Luke was sharing uh about the full spectrum of resident, I, I didn't take it as a slight. I just wanted to punctuate the point that we, we have pathways for everyone and, and would love the opportunity to um engage.
Okay. Um, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jared, the first yours?
Um, I won't uh rehash some of the questions already come up, um, but I want to thank you so much for, for coming in tonight, making this presentation. We really appreciate you taking the time.
Sure.
Thank you. Go ahead. Um, so I will say thank you so much. Um, I would say. I apologize. Go ahead.
Sorry, I had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I'm a little, little adamant. Um, quick, the quick question I had for you was, um, you mentioned uh work, existing work in North Brentwood. Um, could you elaborate a little bit more on the um activities or work you're doing there?
Sure. Uh, we completed during the pan, uh, the height of the pandemic. We assisted them and led their uh facade improvement program. So we did that during the pandemic. We completed the project slightly ahead of schedule and below costs. So they were very pleased with that. We're talking to North Brentwood about a very similar program. We're going to be, they have already said they are ready to start, so we're going to be uh actually starting to roll something out in North Brentwood, um, perhaps as early as June. What we want to be able to do is to work with the communities, leverage the power of the communities, but also respect the autonomy of the individual municipalities, so you don't lose your autonomy. But we would be able to leverage the collective power of the community to uh provide resources. And again, we think it would be a nice compliment to what you're already doing on your uh this uh community development and, and entrepreneurial development arenas.
Right. Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Are you sure you're done this time?
I am. Sorry. Sorry, Selena.
I was like, I know, I thought you said you'll pass, but it's fine. I just don't want to feel like I cut you off. That was my intention. Uh, so definitely, thank you. Um, I think the other partners to me, that sound very natural aside from like Kaywood, Queenstown, Queen Manor, right? And the other apartment buildings that we have in the, in the city, so, so the schools, the schools, both schools, Thomas Stone and Marinia Elementary, they both have a community liaison, uh, pretty active, Ms. Valencia and Ms. Washington. So definitely like, you know, they're the ones that um, that, that hear what the needs of the families are. So that would be a good way to also to reach out and, and figure out how um, how this connection, like Thomas Stone just had a career day uh, on a Saturday and brought various people of like various careers um as well. But I think that they'll be a good, um, a good fit to be able to help us look for people that might need this extra help. Uh, my question to you is, um, Valerie, I asked the language, um, and I appreciate you coming, um. This is a bit of, a bit of like a feedback. Um, I had a conversation with Mayor Robinson uh from North Brentwood. Um, and she provided the contact to um, to Mr. Lawrence of, for myself and, and Brentwood as well, because we had, we were discussing the fact that it's a new world, and we need to make sure that our residents um are able to find the skills to be able to um, the new skills or have other sets of skills, because many of them were hit very hard when it came to job loss um in all of our cities. So if they're able to, you know, join a training program and have a visibility to be able to have a career in, in a different field, right? Um, and if the cities are able to su, to, to help and support, right? It will allow for us to not just change, you know, their current reality, but also change their family reality in the next generations on. So it's talking about like, you know, knowledge and career, you know, um, generational wealth, but at the same time, knowledge. And, and it's more likely for, if you see a parent that's gone to like college, for you to see that as a normal thing, or even training in, in vocational schools that we, we have, um, it's very hard to get people to do vocational um, uh, system, but you know, their, their careers and they could pay, um, they could pay pretty well as well, depending what the vocation are. So uh, my question to you is, I believe you covered this one in, in my conversation with you. Um, but uh, but I want to make sure that I'm clear on this. Um, the program, you know, you did, talked about, there's an aspect of like, you know, bilingual having translator in the program, right? The ability for people to join, this determines on whether they have a social security number, a ten number that will allow them to come in or potentially be able to get these jobs and this track.
Yes. I'll ask John. John is, works very closely with that. Um, and again, we are in some cases dependent upon the employer sponsors and then also uh government regulations. John, can you help on that?
Sure. Uh, Brother Clarence, you, you pretty much answered it. It, it dictates, uh, again, the, the employer's uh requirements uh of citizenship, uh, and again, also our funding uh requirements. So we, we have, uh, one of the requirements is, you know, demonstrating your eligibility and, and proof of residency. And uh, we have had our residents in the past where that has been a challenge. And so we've developed relationships with uh other quasi-government agencies to be able to direct those residents who may have those barriers uh in the most trustworthy manner, trusting, I should say, trusting uh manner that we can uh, to still assist and not uh create uh any, any challenges for that particular family. Uh, whereas those examples have been uh less than fifteen over the years that I've been uh in charge of this program. I'm very familiar with the, the, the challenge. Um, and uh, again, I will say for this particular model and any other model that we customize, there has to be some proof of residency, primarily because of what the employer requires uh for hiring and their own boarding.
So maybe I make, need to make myself a little clearer, because you said citizenship, right? But people have residence and they have work permits, so they are TPS.
Yeah, so then, yes.
They have like work permits, and um, that's like, you know, that's what makes sure that this is like clear, and you know, because you have people that have been residents for, forever and a day. They're legally here in the country. They have social securities or work permits, right? It's just they don't have citizenship because it's very expensive and very hard to get, right?
And I'm glad you cleared.
A limit as well.
Thank you for clarification. Absolutely. If they have a work permit and, and all those documents, as long as that can be um, uh, verified, absolutely, yes.
Perfect. Yeah, I want to make sure that's clear, because um even our undocumented um residents, they have a ten number, and some of them like, you know, are, are allowed to, are allowed to work uh depending on what level they're at. So we'll, I will sit down and, and discuss in detail what they are, because I don't want them to, to feel like, you know, they, they have a promise of, of this coming, right? And they cannot go to the next step because um of, of, of limitations. So some of them might be, you know, okay with it to certain extent, because they're in the process of getting A and B, um, the legal, the, the immigration system. It's just, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot. It's very screwed up, but thank you for answering the question. So we have about two minutes, um, and I see there is somebody, uh, Tony, you want to speak about this specific item?
Yes, this is Tony George.
Okay, so go ahead now. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Tony George, thirty, thirty-three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue. I am a union carpenter with United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners of America. Um, I just wanted clarification on a couple of things. I think I applaud you for, for the program, and I, I know that there is definitely a need to do some training to prepare individuals um that may have some barriers to, to getting employment, to, to prepare them to get jobs and, and be ready to, you know, have a good work ethic and uh be productive. Um, my question is, or you, you were partnering with, you said Washington Gas? That's correct. Okay, now also, are you working at all with the PG County, Prince George's County Department of Workforce Development at all?
Yes, uh, I apologize, my, my mute button. I wasn't able to unmute fast enough. Uh, yes, we are. Um, we, we have worked uh over the years, and again, not to um take up too much time, but you know, employee Prince George's, the workforce development, uh, all of those uh government and quasi-government agencies, we have uh direct relationships and uh in some cases have been primary funding partners of this particular program and other programs that we are managing.
Okay, so the goal is ultimately to get them employment, is it union and non-union?
Correct.
Okay, and are, your partners are underwriting the cost? I didn't, I didn't catch the amount in terms of per, per person that's in the program, what, what the cost is.
Sure. So we, so we're, we're speaking directly to a current model, uh, the utility construction cohort uh, that uh Brother Clarence had mentioned, Joy Williams is a, a, a part of that cohort, and Washington Gas is the uh one hundred percent fund of their program. And it is um a pathway that we're developing uh within the utility uh sector uh within our region.
Um, okay, so I have to cut it off because time's up, but I'm going to ask moving forward, if we have questions for the presenters, ask your two or three questions ahead, so that we're able to answer, because that's your three minutes. If not, makes the, the, our clerk is not going to be able to go stop and go and stop and go. And uh, it becomes a conversation, and that's what we try to avoid in the, in the meeting. So that goes for all of us. If you have a question or two or three, put them all together and let them answer, because sometimes like one answer could bleed into the other one instead of like running your time um back and forward. So I would say this, is there anybody else in the community that would like to speak on this item? Uh, please put your name, last name, uh, block number. You don't have to put um, in, in like, you know, your block address. So be like thirty-seven hundred, thirty-seventh street. That'll be fine. We don't need to know your specific house. Okay? Um, anything on Facebook? Melissa? Jared?
No comments on Facebook.
All right. Thank you guys so much. So, um, Teach Him to Fish, thank you so much for coming tonight. Um, we will absorb all this information, and um, as we have discussions, uh, because this definitely fits under ARPA, right? Um, as we have discussions under ARPA, we'll be able to um figure out what information we need more and what direction um we want to go with it. But I want to thank you guys for um making yourself accessible, and this definitely sounds like a great program to outreach um our residents. And um, like I said earlier, you know, uh, change the status, um, call what it currently is and, and potentially like build careers that would pack them, their families in the community as a whole. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council members. We appreciate the opportunity, citizens.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item number four, Gateway CDC Artist Support Proposal, twenty minutes allocated for this item. Uh, the Gateway CDC will present a proposal to Mayor and Council on providing funding to artists to own their own studios through Route One Corridor. Um, so we have um whoever, who's here to present on behalf of the Gateway CDC, please be aware you have ten minutes to present, and the other ten minutes are for questions and answers.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, my name is Anthony Lee. I am the president. Hello. Um, thank you for having me. Um, and I really appreciate the opportunity to present to you guys uh this evening. Um, I'm also a resident of Mount Rainier. Um, so uh, hopefully that adds a little panache. Um, yes, I'd like to discuss. Um yes, I'd like to discuss some of the uh new and exciting projects that we have going with Gateway CDC and that includes the Studio Lab. Um what we're finding is artists in our community are quickly being relocated or priced out of the market. Um with the um existing uh rising rental rates and studio space that's available. Um and what we're proposing is we we've got a artist together in the community. Um to see if we can promote and uh train um artists in the um. So that they have the ability to actually purchase um properties so that they can become permanent residents and fixtures in our community. Um what we're looking to do is train them on credit, um financing and also um help them with their. Um business um skills and so that they can be able to afford. Uh and um be able to afford and to purchase some of these properties that are available uh as they become available in the community. We are preparing the um report to present, but also we'd like to before that, present to you. The mission, which is an advisory and training initiative. I'm sorry, I'm I'm trying to go through my notes really quickly and I apologize. Um. The vision is to obviously promote ownership of buildings in the community, some of our abandoned warehouses. Uh some of our active warehouses that are transitioning and coming up for sale. What we're finding is um we need to be able to help these artists with feasibility studies. We need to be able to help with attorney's fees, appraisals, evaluations and um work towards um. Helping them obtain the down payment in order to make these purchases. We've been working on this for the last six months. Uh we're trying to clarify where we're going. Um we're asking for support from the city of Mount Rainier as we are all uh other municipalities within the Gateway Arts District. Um that being Brentwood and North Brentwood. So here, just want to make sure I've got everything. Um that's pretty much it. Um. Um hopefully I can entertain some questions and um give you a little more detail. Um but. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so so much. You're um you're very humble, but definitely you you and Michelle are both uh. Key participants of of our community, very active and have done a lot of things for for this community and the art community. Um so I'm going to open it up to Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Um Tony, thanks for being here um and and presenting on that. Um you know, I am the liaison to the Gateway CDC um I'm from the council, so I've seen the work here. Um and and the effort in trying to get the communities to buy into this um and. And just hearing the 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 sort of thoughtfulness and wanting to to get a plan together because the need is so great. Um from some of the artists in the community. Um you know, we had a presentation from from Dylan French. Uh not too long ago, he's opened up an artist space um near the railroad tracks and that's great. And that's going to be there for a lot of artists, but there are artists in the community who, you know, might not be able to afford those those rates. Um and there are artists in the community who, you know, might not, who who are definitely getting priced out of, you know, the 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 rates that are um rising all across the DMV. So. I know how much we value the artists here. Um and so I think this is something that we could consider, especially as a part of ARPA funding. Um uh and and Tony, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's where what Brentwood and North Brentwood are trying to do is is utilize the. The cash we have on hand there to to see if we can help support artists in in this sort of manner.
That is correct.
Right. And Tony, how much are are we looking to get from each municipality? Or or is that not sort of baked out yet, the the exact figure?
It's not pretty, it's not completely baked out, but we are trying to establish it based on um. Um population of each municipality. Um so a percentage, if you will, of that and um. And our ask. I see uh Dr. Harrison has um joined us. Uh she's got her hand raised, so I want to give her an opportunity to speak. If that's okay.
Before we do that, let me make sure uh co- council, um. I know the floor is yours right now. Um and I believe uh Anthony, so just one more speaker and Melissa, I sent you something. Can you put that on screen right now? Um what I send you, can you put it on screen so that we could visually see what what they're referring to? Um Michelle sent me a document. Um so in the meantime, uh let me. Um Tanya, do you have something to add regarding this conversation or the question?
No, actually, I was, I'm sitting on the Gateway CDC board as well, and so I was actually here to help with the presentation. And so when we was getting to the point of the money, I wanted to be the one to have the ask. And so um one of the things that um in in you're pulling up the presentation, which is really, really great. I I believe in the vision of the Studio Lab and um the new tier that they're um working on and rolling out. Um one of the things that we're at all in the municipalities, at least at least for seventy-five K. Um we asked Brentwood for seventy-five K, so we'll go back. Um as Tony was speaking of the proportion of the cities and that was one of um. Brentwood's ask is uh we're um asking based off of the size of the community. Um or the municipality or the city. So they're looking at um Bush Mount Rainier. Maybe we can get even a hundred K, but it's totally up to the mayor and council on the amount that they want to um. Help and partner with uh um the Gateway CDC and the Studio Art Lab. Um as Tony mentioned earlier, this project and the vision for this is to be able to enable artists to control their spaces. Enable stable practices, create more financial stability and build artist equity, maintain world-class art district. We have a great art district here in uh in in right here at the Gateway CDC. And I think it's really important that we invest in our own. And so that's the part that I wanted to add to it. And thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much. I'll send mute.
Are you back on mute?
Yeah.
I need, I needed my own self apparently. Um so try to make sure if you guys are seeing this question, ask the two or three questions on at once. So that way we could move forward. If not, this this conversation is going to take longer than we expect and it might not address all the stuff. I'm trying to put the document, it was in a word stock, so I'm trying to save it in um in in it was in um. In a drive, so I'm trying to save it so we guys get to see it. So Luke, do you have anything else to add or any questions for the panel?
No, I think just um uh uh maybe a timeline on sort of next steps might be helpful, but you you know, if they want to address that at the end, after addressing everybody else's questions, that could work.
Thank you so much. Uh Jimmy?
Uh I'm actually waiting for Luke to give us some other lead and what are what are what the action points are in this. I mean, supportive, but. You know, maybe, you know, to kind of forget what we what what are our next steps?
All right, thank you, Jimmy. Uh Valerie, Jared?
Um yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see maybe if we have something in writing. I'd like to look at it a little further. Um just so I can understand a little bit more about what you, because you were talking about um, um you know. Providing trainings on credit financing, business skills, but then you were talking about feasibility, uh you know, uh you know. Studies and all that as well. So I just wanted to see what the breakdown of, you know, training versus actual design and development. Uh for the studio um or for artists would be. Um but those are my questions.
So um who could answer? I think it's like, I went ahead and emailed you guys, so I switched it from uh. From where it was to a Word document, so you guys also should have it as well as the clerk, okay? Because that was part, um they couldn't open it. That's the reason why it's not, it wasn't here. All right. Uh perfect. Um Huku, um can anybody answer Valerie's question, Anthony or or Tanya?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to to try and answer that. The document that the mayor is sending out kind of highlights and bullet points some of those. Um items to kind of add some order to what we're saying. I know I was a little scattered in my presentation. Um but um we want to help on both sides. We want to help the artists be thriving businesses, but we also want to assist. In the process of purchasing real estate. And that's really our goal. So it is a two-pronged process. Um we need to get them up to speed. We believe that um there's a. There's sort of a vacuum of information that a lot of these artists, you know, they really concentrate on their crafts. And really not on the business side of things as much as they need to. Um and so we want to be able to support them in those endeavors um so that they will be successful. I hope that answers it to some degree. The document that the mayor has sent you is still a work in progress. Uh we want to get it. Um completely detailed and ordered. Um but this one sort of highlights in a nutshell what we're attempting to do. Um so if you could give us some time, I know Luke asked for a timeline. Uh we're looking for about uh an additional three weeks uh to get our information together. Um so that we can um have a formal uh document that we can submit to municipalities that explains our process.
Thank you so much. I think um I'll pass it to Jared right now and I will say something in the in the lines of um. I'm glad you're coming to us early enough as this is being developed so that we know what the options are and what is working. So that way, once you have the document and more meat to it, um we could not just build, you know, based on the questions we have, but also figure out where 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 it's going to. To try to work in what way we could support. Jared, the floor is yours.
Yep, no, I just wanted to thank uh Tony um for coming in tonight and um. Um Tanya as well, so I I appreciate it. It's a it's an evening away, so I thank you for taking the time and um coming out tonight. Um. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um you know, I and Gateways, I just want to comment, you know, Gateway CDC of uh which I served on the board of uh. Many years ago, probably about over a decade now. Um this has done some really incredible work and entertaining um artists and um. Bringing the community together, uh not just in Mount Rainier, but across all three municipalities. So we uh appreciate your work. Um and I really uh, you know, thank you for coming in tonight and kind of giving us a a foreshadowing, a out uh framework of. What you're planning to um submit. I think it would be uh certainly would be helpful to receive a uh the fleshed-out proposal when it's when it's ready. Um you know, with a with a presentation as appropriate. Um but I really, really appreciate the work you're doing. Uh the ideas uh that you're putting forth, the commitment that you've made to this. Um to this, to this corridor and to all three municipalities at um preserving and helping grow. Our um our culture of artists. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared. Um I I would say.
Thank you.
Uh for me, definitely thank you for coming out and also for the work you're doing with the three municipalities. I feel like coming together, it would, we have a better fighting chance. Um prices in real estate continue to going up and that also sometimes means that um. Artists are are going to have to relocate and will lose who we are as an essence of like, you know, who the cities are. We are a city that's very proud to be. Um the hub of the arts, right? And the whole entire core, even the CDC mentioned, but as real estate prices go up. Um it exists, but I, one thing that I appreciate about, you know, the plan is also that you're working and also building the next um, the next generation coming up. When it comes to the artist, uh because it's needed. I think I use me to also um see that that's an option. Um and I think you guys do a beautiful job at showcasing what artists and what mediums um they have. And the multiple outlets and also that is um, it's a career, you know. So they could pursue their passions and 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 make a make a happy living, but also like find ways for us to be able to. To support because um working in this project will allow for this space to stay um as a community space and. And and it's needed. Um I know the the gateway is already maximized as much as they can their space. So definitely there's there's room for growing and you guys continue taking uh members and helping them. And I've been able to see. The nurturing happening between, you know, one artist working with another and vibing and. And the city has done quite a bit, um also with economic development in the field, right? So I think this is definitely um a a good step forward to to address the situation. Um and it's very timely as well. So thank you both um and everybody from the Gateway CDC for coming to us and start putting this information in front of us so that way um. We start thinking about it. In concert, if you have any questions, you guys go so um. Reach out to them um to so that way like some of the things that you might see that, you know, in the document, right? Um they might be able to like flush it out and get it um ready for the next time or be able to address um the other concerns. Okay? So.
You may and council.
So next, hold that one second. I was going to ask you guys one, const, if you guys want to go in around, if not, I'm going to open it up to the community.
I I just have one comment on a path forward, but no questions.
The floor is yours.
Um I would recommend that, you know, we have our June work, our, yeah, our June work session um is um. You know, June twenty-first. Um and then we recess for July and August. So I think it would be. Really good for the gateway to um, you know, have that as a deadline to present to us on June twenty-first. Because that'll give us something to um take home and consider while we're on recess for July and August and and looking at. You know, how we're going to allocate the rest of our ARPA funding and and, you know, that's, you know, four weeks from now. Um. So that'll give you more than enough time to to have something for us. So. Melissa, if we could pencil in this conversation for the June twenty-first work session, if Gateway's okay with that. You know, that way they don't, they don't miss July and August when we're on recess.
Absolutely, we're committed.
Okay, perfect. So we'll we'll definitely see there. Uh Constance, the second round has opened. Does anybody has any anything else to um to add? Uh we're going to go with Valerie, Jared and Jimmy.
Um no, I think I think we're good. Um thank you for presenting. I think this is a good idea. Um and I like, I like, um I look forward to hearing from you on June twenty-first.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Jared.
Nothing else. Thank you.
Jimmy?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Perfect. So we will open it up to the community at this moment. Um I will read the messages on it. I have um. Uh I have uh from Tanya, thank you. Yes, we can work on that. And uh thank you, Tanya and and Tony for making sure um that you guys are here. Um and all the work that you guys do, it's it's a lot of work. And and Tanya, for you guys that don't know, was a former. Council member of Brentwood and the vice mayor for Brentwood as well um the last term. Um so thank you for that, for continuing your service to the community beyond uh beyond uh your your previous duties. Uh Tony, three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue. Um the first yours?
Okay, I just wanted to say that I think it's a great idea. Kudos to Anthony and um Tanya for uh presenting it and. The hard work that they're putting in to make this a reality.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody on Facebook or on the chat that wishes to speak on this item? Uh Jared, anybody?
No comments on Facebook.
Thank you so much. Okay, there's no other comment on the chat. So um thank you guys and we look forward to seeing you guys in the June work session and um. Please reach out to um to to any of us if you have any questions about any statement that was made. And uh Luke also um, you know, continue uh keeping us up today um for the twenty-first to make sure it's on the agenda. Okay, and thank you for being our liaison to the to the gateway.
Thank you again, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Likewise.
Perfect, thank you. So moving on to, oh goodness, this letters get smaller by the second. Uh item number, the the number five, Mayor and Council priorities for FY twenty-twenty-three. This is a twenty minutes. The mayor and council will discuss their priorities for FY twenty-three. Um so the reason why this is here is because usually we do our priorities at the at the end of the summer. And when it does happening, it's like the staff who have had two months to start working on preparing the priorities. So that will on September when we come. They're already like um ahead of the game, right? So that will on September when we come, they're already like ahead of the game, right? And by the end of the summer, they have, you know, they've been there doing others other work. And a few of them have asked, you know, like, can they be done a lot sooner so that we could work on it? And it gives them some time instead of like, you know, a week or two as they're preparing for the the September meeting. Number one and number two, I know we've been having various discussions of what we want to do for next year and stuff. So I wanted to make sure we take this time to group ourselves and figure out what the priorities are for the next year as the collective now that we have our war to see fields, right? It is important for us to discuss this. So that way it also allows for the staff to know what the priorities are and ideally match whatever common interest we have. So they have a direction on where to go and what to do. And to be a hundred percent clear, we all have a long list of priorities that mass have asked council to prepare their top three. And so I'll leave the floor to that. Originally, Councilmember Cheswick was the one that brought this idea back in twenty seventeen when we were tiny little junior council members, Luke. And we have gotten, we grown a little bit more, right? So I'm gonna leave you lead part of this discussion, Luke. So the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, just the just to give a little bit more context on the and the reason for this, you know, there's a lot of shared interest that we have. And a lot of times when we end up talking about what our priorities are, a lot of them are the same. And then if we can focus our attention on those things, you know, at least those things get done. I think when Selena and I were not on the council, you know, there there could be you know, some 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 conflict at times. And so so this is this is sort of a way to to get folks rolling in the same direction on some stuff. Selena, do you want me to 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 write this stuff down and share my screen? Or or do you want me to just sort of talk through what mine are and then move on? How would you like me to?
I don't have a whiteboard today, but you still have a nice open dish for you to write them down. So Luke's job usually was drag drag across a whiteboard so they could write them down so we could visually see them. That board is actually like right behind Melissa right now, but that board has is not gonna be touched. That has the calendar for the next two years. But if you could write him down, I mean, obviously add yours and and also write him down. Because that's the document that we keep, you know. And like I said, we have a lot of priorities. But at least we could work on our top three and figure out where we could overlap. And also gives a guidance to the to the staff and us because we do have more things in common than we don't. And it has worked for us for the last five years. So Luke, happy five year anniversary in the council. All right, go ahead.
Could we actually start with somebody else and then I can write things down and then and then get my thoughts together, Mayor? Would that be okay?
That's that's fine. I'll stick with War One. Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Actually, I'd rather have you and Selena start out because get a sense of what you've had done in the past. Plus, if you couple one of mine, I could get a couple of extra.
No, that's not the point. The point is to 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 say what you brought because you'll see that we have a lot in common.
We should we should put in like sealed envelopes.
Brian, Brian will remember when Melinda came to this conversation with twenty-three different priorities and we figured things out. I know Brian's here. Okay, so I'll go ahead with mine. You know, for me, there are two related, but I'll keep them separate. Executing on a strategic vision. I think that's very important for the city to execute on this next fiscal year. I think number two is executing on a holistic redesign of our streets and sidewalks. That's a big priority for me. And in the past, this is where the third one gets confusing for me because there are a whole so just so the public knows, there are a whole lot more stuff here that's that's important. And that, in fact, we're gonna talk about tonight. So Potts Hall is a thing we're gonna talk about tonight. And that's important. And there's 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 a whole bunch of other stuff. Stormwater management is still very important to me and I'm still gonna be doing stuff on. But but, you know, there are some things that I feel like are are where where, yeah, you have to pick three and there are places where I think, you know, my attention is gonna go. And so I'm gonna put this on here and I don't know if I'm gonna kick myself for putting this on here. But I am gonna say Spring Park. Because I think that that process needs to be restarted. And I think we should do something before people forget that we were ever gonna do something with it. And that's my priorities for the next fiscal year.
Thank you for the three and the other five that you added verbally.
Right, sorry.
All right. So I'll just give you a hard time. Okay, so Jimmy, you're next.
Okay. So since Luke took my three, I can add three more. I'm just kidding. So I I think Potts Hall is a top priority for me. It's the one building which the city owns, which I don't think any developers will want to have anything to do with it. It's a historical building. So it's really upon upon us to actually deal with it and try and make it something that's a major attractive thing in our city. So trying to, you know, figure out how we do the funding and actually it's, you know, we've had that property now for, you know, maybe fifteen years. And, you know, it's time for us to actually do something with it. The second thing is, you know, and this is more of an immediate thing, but I'd like to get a police advisory board. You know, actually nail down so people in our community have more of a engagement with the police in terms of public safety. So there's more of a sense of how that, you know, kind of helps with the not just the cooperation, but with people, you know, kind of feeling that they're part of the public safety efforts. And the third is trying to see if we can do something about the rent stabilization or rent rental issues in the city and and kind of addressing that maybe in the fall. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Jimmy. Jared?
Sorry, okay, I was on mute. Yeah, no, I I have actually no disagreements with anything Luke and Luke and Jimmy have put forth. So I just consider these, I guess, supplements. You know, we've we've asked, we've allocated a lot of our funding. A lot of it is, you know, kind of clear things like food security. Some of them are larger projects. So just the, you know, supporting and seeing through the implementation of major capital projects that we've funded through ARP. Mr. Kamali, I want to make sure you know that I understand and we all understand, you know, we have we have given you a big big ask, you know, opportunity for a lot of resources through ARP for one-time capital projects that we need in the city, but know that that's, you know, that is not a small lift. The second piece is, you know, we've we we have an opportunity because of the funding that's been provided for the federal infrastructure bill that will be available through the federal government at the state level. Making sure that we're at this moment continuing to actively seek funding and then implementing seeking funding and then then winning it for critical projects through the city. You know, kind of the same thing with ARP. We're in a you know, we're at a moment where there are resources and we should be ready to chase and to execute. Luke, I don't know if you found that.
Infrastructure bills, right?
Yeah.
Takes and execute.
Yeah. Yep. And I I think again, you know, we're a city with a budget that is really mostly very labor heavy. We can cover operational costs, but not these one-time major capital costs that have a really transformative effect for a city. You know, we've done a great job at getting resources for that, existing council, past council, mayors and so forth. And thank you for all of that. I just wanna, you know, we have a good moment to keep the momentum going. So I think the probably, you know, last piece is just, you know, kind of keeping can continue to sort of keeps, you know, we've had good good moment. I don't I don't know how to affirm this as a priority specifically. But, you know, keeping the momentum going that we've had in terms of economic development, both with our biggest redevelopment IFG, but also keeping things rolling in the corridor. So thanks.
Thank you so much, Jared, for keeping it to less than ten.
I'm 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 not I'm not a I'm not briefing my words, sorry.
We're all bad. Trust me. That that's the that's the joke. We always come up with we say three because we know we're gonna come up with ten. So I'm equally as guilty. So that's 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 the that's the joke on it because I'm just as bad as all of you guys. Valerie, you're next.
Um, thank you. So my first two are the same as Luke's. I would like to also execute on a strategic vision for the city and the traffic study. The third thing that I'd really like to focus our, you know, staff and and, you know, mayor and council on is expanding our economic development office to include community development. One of the things I heard most when I was knocking on doors recently was that both homeowners need help with maintaining their homes. And, you know, I so I was, you know, you can look on the city website. It takes you to the state. The state takes you back to this county. If we could set up like a fund for homeowners to have some potential relief on maintaining their homes, that would be good. It's also community, if you expanded the Office of Economic Development to include community development, then you could set up programs to help with rent stabilization efforts and things like that. That's it's hard to do when you only have one person in that office. And I think that would be important so that if if we want to go down a road where we're providing rent subsidy or, you know, stabilization efforts, that you'd have a person in that office to manage that. Same thing with the economic development and the homeowner stuff. So I just think that would be something to focus on. It's how do we expand that office so that you have additional staff to make sure that you can do all the community development that we want to do going forward.
Thank you so much. Now mine, right? I I purposely had it to write it down to try to avoid giving my three hundred list, but I'll probably stick to the same ten. So I'll tell you where I'm at, right? I have infrastructure, strategic vision, and youth involvement. Those will be my three things if I have to like narrow it down into a few words. So don't be putting strategic vision first, Luke. Let me try to cheat out of that one. I saw that. This is why we're in the screen.
So is it the same one is 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 Jared's pretty much?
So I will tell you what infrastructure is to me, right? So I'll give you the three words, right? So infrastructure, a strategic vision, and youth involvement. For me, infrastructure is the city itself, right? It's buildings more than anything. The offices is people, the building, the community. So to me, that's like what we need to work on it. That's where strategic vision comes into place as well. So to me, it's like two or three. You could put them together. But if we don't, we need to be able to create strategic vision for the city to focus on the same, not just the same logo, but that every single from committee, from staff, from, you know, everything that we do. It ties it down to it. We do have a document that was, you know, a couple of years back. I think the last one was touched was around around this time. Then it hasn't been touched, but I don't know how much in tune it is with our reality currently, right? But to me, when it comes to, that's where infrastructure Potts Hall fits. Right? We have a lot of buildings. That's what something that most people don't realize that the city has a lot of quite a few buildings. So we have been very fortunate that we have been part of councils that invested into buildings, especially now the worth of them. But they have not been up kept. So what I want to make sure that is we take care of the city buildings in order to be able to do a lot of things that we want to do when it comes to economic development, when it comes to like everything else that you see there. Right? Executing the strategic vision, I told you guys, why? We need to have a vision where we're going. I feel like we do. But I think we need to narrow it down to have it in paper and bullet points and have a plan for the next three, five to ten years to figure out how we're gonna work. And that's where, you know, doing the addition of five years with a budget comes into place, right? If we know where we're going, it's easier to foresee where we want to be. For youth involvement, you know, I'm very big on that when it came to scholarship, when scholarship committee, right? But also when it comes to the youth council that we're gonna, you know, see the information today. But also, I I started developing a junior mayor program for the little beauty kids because the youth council is like a seven and up. And the junior mayor program is for the little beauty kids, right? The the high school kids, I mean, the little elementary and some of the kids up to the sixth grade, right? But I realized it's needed very much, especially in the last career day that I did, you know, like it got them excited and I just in municipal government. But also as a tool to like reach out to them and and honestly think that we need to be having a youth council to be able to advise the council. Mayor council, when it comes to decisions that we make, not just as, you know, like making them solid and and they have to put up with whatever we decide, right? It's important for them to get involved. So I I would say to me, the infrastructure aside aside from the buildings itself is also our committees that need help. We have been out of compliance and I know Mayor Miles, there was the document that she shared with all of us. So I'm gonna look through it and try to tie it up and then send it to you guys and bring it up. So that way we have a vision when it comes to the committees because right now they're 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 in different focus. So that to me is any infrastructure related to the city. It's on and not just the building, the committees, the staff, the funding, all of it, but create a strong foundation for the city. So that'd be my infrastructure slash foundation. So you could put it as that. So like I told you guys, I'm not any better than you guys are. So okay. We add up in sync might be the right the right word. My apologies. I would like to correct that one. Okay? So, all right, so we have in front of us the priorities for the next the next year. And while Luke worked his magic to regroup what looks like that appears in more than one of our lists. So we could figure out where the collective priorities are for all of us. Yeah, rent civilization, sustainability, construction stuff. Go ahead. Let me see. Then you have strategic vision as well. So you guys are seeing a pattern, right? And I think this will make the staff very happy to know where we're going with it. To also point out, just because we do not share those, it means we are not gonna be part of it. For for Jimmy, put up Potts Hall as well, Luke, because that will fall under infrastructure foundation. And and obviously also fall under executing mayor capital projects funded through ARPA and other mediums, right? And Spring Park falls very much into infrastructure as well, so you know. Anyways, or foundation, which so, yep. All right. So what are the next steps, Luke?
I mean, I think they all of this sort of runs together. I don't know that we need to, you know, we don't have a lot on here and there's a lot of repeating. So what I can do is I can sort of, if folks want, I can I can keep this document together with names. So we see what we did, but then I can make the list even smaller. You know, just so that just so that folks can see, you know, we don't have too much on here.
Yeah, and it's realistic. We're working in a in a one-year foundation. We tried to do it like that. So that was achievable goals. That does not mean that some of these things are not gonna take longer, but it is achievable steps that we could lead towards making this 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 happen.
Yeah.
It was definitely good standing because you have like, you have the police advisory board today. The, you know, Potts Hall is also in today. The youth youth council is there today. I know Jared, I will ask for the for the infrastructure, if you could put something together for the June work session. So that way we could start like we could get all in the same patience that since that is your very big area of expertise.
Yep.
So that'll be good for us to start thinking about it and and also for the staff to start working, you know, this summer to figure out what we qualified and what we're gonna go after so we could line it up. For Valerie, when it comes to the community, I think that also falls under under ARPA. I was looking at, there's actually, if I'm not mistaken, is Bowie who's helping the homeowners, new ones. They have a program, so start looking into that one. And definitely something we could definitely work. And I think we're heading towards that direction to make sure we're also helping. And definitely something we could definitely work, and I think we're heading towards that direction to make sure we're also helping, um, uh, some of the homeowners that, that might need that extra help. Okay, and definitely strategic vision will tie all of this together as well as the foundation infrastructure. Okay?
Yeah, and you know, one other thing I may add, Mayor, um, you know, when you look at that, when I, I, I'd ask everyone to just sort of l- look at the calendar and give a, you know, i- it's been helpful in the past where we've, we've spent July and August, even though we're on resources, you, you sort of, you never stop thinking about the city and how you can improve things and think about how you want to, um, tee this stuff up. So the, the fall is a really good time to, um, you know, maybe late summer, early fall, start, you know, asking Mr. Kamali if you can work with staff on something. So I'll just use Valerie this thing for an example here, you know. Expand economic development, obviously include community development. You may want to talk with the city manager in August, September, develop sort of a proposal on what this could look like in the fall. Um, and then it could be something you either fund through ARPA or you want to fund through the budget, and then that would tee it, if, if you have a, if you tee it up for a work session in September, October, November, you know, and there's consensus from the mayor and council, then Mr. Kamali has that information to build that into the budget in the spring. So just think about how the year works, um, and, and, you know, that's, 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 that's good. And then for staff, you know, this is a lot that we're asking, the executing on the strategic vision, POTS Hall, um, the, the, you know, finding a vendor for the strategic vision, finding a vendor for the redesign of the streets and sidewalks. So staff is gonna need to think about, okay, the year is, you know, that's, the year's not a lot of time to do this stuff. So you really got to think about how you're gonna use your time wisely. Um, and so that, that could be helpful.
Give me five minutes to the, to the time. Melissa already sent me a message that we're over time.
Oh, sorry.
Five minutes?
And.
Can have a motion to add five more minutes to the topic?
So moved.
Thank you. Go ahead, Luke, uh, you're finishing.
So yeah, and, and the same thing, if, if you need to build in community discussion, so sometimes, you know, Selena and I in the past would, would, would have our Ward One meetups where we talk these ideas through with people and we'd schedule those for when it was still warm outside and get feedback, and then we'd develop something, bring it to the city. So all that stuff, just to say a year sounds like a long time, it's not a long time, especially once the budget, you know, comes in the spring, you're, you're, and, and there's bound to be an emergency. Every year we've this last year was Spring Park, that was the thing that all, out of nowhere, took up so much.
Pandemic.
Um, so, and every year there's gonna be one thing that we just don't control, something's gonna happen, and so, you know, plan your time wisely, that would be all I'd say.
Yeah, and I think that this is the reason why I thought it was important for us to bring it now. Because we already passed the budget, right? And then the staff could start thinking about what it looks like, if they need to get vendors, if they need to get X, Y, and Z, right? We could start working on, on this, um, for the rest of the location, there's a group of us are working on it from various cities, right? Uh, we're coming together, we had it to put a little bit, um, of a tiny hole because of the various elections that we're running. Um, so that's already in, in, in work to figure out like what it looks like um, for all of our cities that, you know, and, and now, so there's, that's a whole this different conversation on it. But what you have right here in front is more or less what, um, what I, what some of our share, uh, on it, and to be honest with you, it seems like everything, everything basically, um, works together. You know, somebody will be able to like, um, work on it tonight. And, and Jimmy, thank you for making sure that we're, you know, that we follow through with the Police Advisory Board, it hasn't fallen off the place, so if we could get, um, the information that we need today, right, it will allow for us to, um, to put, make, uh, to vote on it in June and then, um, advertise it like, you know, in, as soon as possible, right? So that we could start getting a board together.
Does that mean I can add another?
Another what?
No.
Nope. That's it, you're, you're, you're in trouble now. That said, you sound like POTS Hall, I'm done. Geez, like, as of tonight, I will have taken two of my priorities out of the list. No, Jimmy, does not work that.
Kidding, go ahead.
We'll put another three on your plate, okay? So, um, so you, what you have right now is the priorities on it, think about it, figure out how we can work on it. Look up what the agenda is. Valerie, this is something we're thinking of doing, like, you know, uh, for the ARPA. It might be a different, um, it, it might, it might not need to be tied to the, to the budget calendar, it might be, it could just be part of like the ARPA discussion, okay? Um, so, council, you, we have reviewed the priorities and the other thing to make clear is like the summer is the time that we use when we're quote unquote on recess. That's a lot of the time that we do to work with the community and, and communicate, right? Because winters, um, we have had one, two meetings during the winter, uh, Luke and I, and that was, um, it was a lot, let me tell you this, uh, definitely the elements were, were very interesting, right? Um, so you have them here, think about it, review them, and we're gonna bring them back up again. Um, probably in June, at the end of June for the work session. Um, and we'll continue tying them up if there's something else you see there, okay? Anything else to add, council, Luke?
No, I'll send this to everyone right now.
Perfect, thank you. Make sure that, um, Melissa also has it as, as our, well, Melissa, Mr. Kamali, but, um, as, as our point for that. Valerie, Jared, we're good? I, I will take this as a yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Alright, perfect. See, that wasn't that bad, right? We just did ten each. Um, but it's good stuff. I, I think that we definitely are insane, which it helps, it makes meetings a lot easier, because you see this coming in the year, so it's not just like randomly there. Okay, perfect, moving on to item number six, youth council discussion. The mayor and council will have a discussion on the youth council. Uh, Melissa, do you have the document I, I sent forward? So this is a discussion, um, I wanted to start putting in front of you what the document looks like. So, um, if you have any questions or any ideas or feedback, um, you could, um, let me know, so we could reinforce it. The idea of a youth council. Thank you, Melissa. The idea of the youth council is there, um, I did talk to Tacoma Park. They have a youth council, they've had it for a while, and I basically, um, set up a lot of the documents that I have in front of me based on their council. I have requested for, I'm gonna be talking to the mayor and their youth council to get more of idea of, of what it, what it looks like and their challenges or, or barriers that they've had and, and how to be able to address them as a city. So want to be to provide an opportunity for the youth of Marinier to acquire a greater knowledge of and appreciation for local government through active participation in the system. To help mayor and the city council to address and accomplish the goals of this community by working directly with the representatives of youth. Uh, to serve the youth of Marinier by informing Marinier municipal government of the needs and wishes of the youth, planning and, and, and implementing social, educational, cultural recreation activities for the youth, working with mayor, city council, city department, heads, schools, civic clubs, several organizations to provide service and leisure opportunities for the youth and of the city and helping to instill a feeling of positive self-worth and esteem, teaching respects for the rights of others and promoting community pride. There's a whole chart section you guys could read on it. I'm proposing to have five youth appointed by mayor and council to represent the, the cross-sections through the city, right? Um, and they report, um, and they will report to us who their chair and vice chair, so they'll select their vice chair and chair among themselves. Right? The grades are from seven to twelve, except for the chair, and they need to be grade eleven or twelve. The term is one year and they have to apply yearly. And they need to meet the following qualifications: remain a resident of City Marinier, attend meetings on a regular basis and inform the youth council of absence prior to meeting, maintain at least a 2.5 GPA, uh, during the, during school years, fulfill their responsibilities, so the office is an example for youth in the community. Alright, in addition, so their basis, um, and then also has, um, uh, the removal, right? In addition to their basis removals, therefore this chapter, a member can be removed from youth council if they fail to sustain such of the above qualifications. Backense should be filled by mayor and council for the remaining of their unexpired term. Members should be appointed annually at the start of the school year and should serve one-year terms. Go ahead, Melissa. So, um, they also like, um, there's the City Marinier Youth Charter, and basically covers a lot of the things that I just told you, so it'll be like repeating it. It talks about their, um, it, you know, is to provide the youth of Marinier acquire greater knowledge and participation of government, I read that. Um, for mayor concerts to address problems and accomplish goals of this community by working directly with the representatives of the youth. And then it, the same, you guys already know their qualifications, uh, the council membership, um, I proposed five, and then it gives you the rest of the information. Um, so that is what I have for you guys to propose. We did, um, there you go, there's the appointment process, the first meetings, the duties and responsibilities. Okay, so they do have to go through application process, um, and we select them and, and then we work through who, um, who on it. So this is a draft, please look at it, um. Give me any feedback, and I'm gonna bring it back, um, in June, but at least wanted to like, you know, uh, make sure you guys got, um, a sense of it. We did allocate it 2,500, if I'm not mistaken, in the budget for the youth council. So that way, um, they could propose activities with the idea that one, we get the right feedback from the youth when it comes to some of the legislation that are on it. Also, um, we could appoint, uh, members of this youth committee to other committees, so that way they're also getting, get involved, right? So that's more or less, um, what I have for you guys tonight. Let me know if you guys have any questions, but right now the document is basically for your review. And give me any feedback you have, so we could start the process of, um, enacting a youth council, and I'm gonna try to invite, um, ideally, and I, I know it's gonna be very tight, and I try to invite, uh, the Tacoma Park, um, um, hopefully the chair or representative of their board to come and speak to us, um, as well, so we get a feedback through them on what it looks like and, and what, what is the reason, um, that they joined. So that, that is my spiel, and I'm gonna open up the floor to, uh, we're gonna go Valerie, Jared, Jimmy, and Luke. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think this is a great idea. Um, I don't know that this, um, I don't know that I have this document in my agenda packet that was mailed, emailed to us, so if I could get this separately, that would be great, so I can just look at it directly, but I think this is a good idea. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. I'll mail it directly. We were having a problem lifting up how it was, so I had to like re, um, repurpose it. So I'll send this directly, and Melissa, um, I'll send it to Melissa, and also see, uh, Kamali, Melissa on it. Okay, perfect, thank you. Jared?
Yep, um, yeah, no, I hundred, hundred and fifty percent behind this idea, uh, Mayor, I, you know, as Luke had mentioned earlier, um, and, and I think we've all reflected, uh, the folks that show up at, um, city council meetings and you know, give feedback to us are often, um, you know, often a, a slice of the city and not the whole city. Um, and I think anything, uh, that pulls in folks and youth especially, um, which are, of course, demographically much more likely to come from a broader cross-section of the community, including our, um, renters and apartment dwellers, um, is gonna be great, and ways to get them, folks, uh, younger folks plugged in and understand how their local government works, how their city works, uh, interactions. I, I for one would, you know, love additional opportunities like, like this one, to engage with, um, engage with youth in our city, especially as I'm, uh, think, uh, only one of you that's not a, not a parent, so. Um, but, uh, yeah, no, I fully, fully in support, um, would, you know, love to learn a little bit more, I think, about how, um, Tacoma Park and others have, uh, and I can certainly do that research on my own, have, uh, have done these, but I, I'm, uh, really like the idea. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared. Um, Jimmy, and then Luke?
Jimmy, you're muted.
No, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to mute. Uh, no, thanks, Selena, for doing this, and I'm all supportive, and just let us know how we can help get this done.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. Uh, Luke?
Uh, this is just great. Um, Selena, you've done so much, um, for the youth in the city since you've come on, um, council, and this is just another step in that direction. Um, um, I, you know, I, you, capacity is one thing I'm nervous about, um, um, you know, so, so let us know how we can help. But, uh, that's something that with, with all our city committees, capacity for staff and capacity for us is, is something that's become more far in my mind now, so I think we all just need to be mindful of that, um, uh, but this is, this is great. Thanks.
Thank you, Luke. Yeah, I think that, you know, I think I want to run this one just basically how the scholarship is, you start training people, and then now I'm like, the involvement with the scholarship committee that I have is basically, you know, um, they select the, they select the people, they review the information, they come to council, say, this is who we got, right? But I think it allows us to engage with them, and, um, we'll tie it up the other, the other, and this, I wanted to make sure you guys saw the document to figure out how to lead on it. But the idea is for them to lead their meetings, right? And, um, I'm happy to service as an advisor as, as the beginning of stages, right? And then work with, um, work with whoever Mr. Kamali assigns to, to the role, right? So we could, um, we could continue going, so when it comes, you know, making sure they have their open meetings, act training and things like that, but this to me is also a way for us to empower them. But can you imagine kids, um, going to college and, um, going to job, um, uh, you know, jobs, showing a resume that this is the, this is what they had to do for the city? So to me, it'll be like a very strong recommendation letter, right? But also for like experience, so many skills that they could learn and give them opportunity to lead, um, in the decision of the city, because I always tell you guys, right, whatever decision we made today, it's gonna affect them directly as we get older, you know, and they're the next generation coming, so they need to have a say in. This will give an opportunity for them to have a say. So, um, so I will send this to you guys out, and please review it. If you have any questions, let me know. If you see something that is missing on the loop, uh, let me know, and, and I will be, um, if any of you guys, like, you know, so I'll talk to, um, the mayor Tacoma Park, right, Kate, and, um, I was, you know, when are they having the meetings, they're having them virtually, so I will also view what it looks like, so you got a sense of of what it looks like and, and what we could expect on our end, you know? Alright, perfect. Um, anybody in the community has a question, please tap your name in the chat. First, Brian Nittler. I'm concerned. POTS Hall is next. Alright, perfect, thank you guys so much, and, um, you'll be receiving this document in the next few minutes. Okay, um, Melissa, if you can, send it to them. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to number seven. POTS Hall Welcome Center Discussion, twenty minutes, the mayor and council discuss options for financing and issuing a request or proposals for redeveloping POTS Hall. As we all have discussed, that even in our priorities, you know, POTS Hall, it is a priority for all of us. Um, we see the need of having this building and working conditions, and I no longer want to see like documents being shoveled around for like every ten years. We do a, a beautiful piece of, of, um, of architect, and, and they're just there. Uh, Mr. Kamali, I believe, has worked on, 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 on work on POTS Hall for as long as he's been in the city, when he was Public Work Director, and, and we still need like, you know, a lot of work on POTS Hall. Alright, so Luke, I'm gonna see the floor to you, followed by Jimmy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, you know, there's been a lot of work done on this over the years from people, um, you know, Brian, who's on this call, is, is probably put more work in it than anyone else. Um, or actually, he may have left the call by now. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I think there's a way forward here. Um, we, we, in, but we need to start thinking about the money with interest rates rising and the Fed's gonna raise it again to try to curb inflation. Um, I, I think it's, it's on us to really strike now, while we can get an interest rate that's still relatively low from the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, we have a debt service that's on the books that we just passed our budget on. Um, it is coming off our books very soon. Um, we could pay it off any day we want. Um, and we could replace that debt service obligation, um, with a new loan for three million dollars, and um, you know, I, I think we should, we, we should talk through what that would look like at our June work session. Um, or maybe at our June legislative session, because we've already talked about it at work sessions, so we don't, we don't wait too long. Um, but, you know, I think that's gonna be close to a one-to-one replacement rate. In other words, getting a three million dollar loan for POTS Hall, um, will not hit our budget at all, if it just replaces the debt obligation that we just got off the books. Um, so it'd be very easy to absorb. Um, now, why the three million dollar figure? Well, you know, we think this project could cost six million dollars, um, and may even be more as inflation keeps rising. Um, but we, we, we think we will probably have 1.5 million dollars in state aid. Um, we got $250,000, we may get one point something, um, next year, it looks like that, that may happen. So, so you figure six million minus 1.5, we're left with 4.5 million to fund. Uh, we could fund 1 million from ARPA, um, because we still have 10.6 outstanding on ARPA. Uh, that brings it down to 3.5 million. Um, now, we have a lot of money in our reserves, um, in our investment account, we have over, we sort of have a checking account, we have a savings account, and then we have an investment account. Our investment account right now is worth over 2 million dollars, I believe. Our investment account right now is worth over two million dollars, I believe. Um, and that's only earning interest at like two point something percent. We're very limited in what we can invest in. We can only invest in a state investment fund. I tried to research whether we could actually invest in index funds. We're prohibited by law at doing in doing that. Um, so an interest rate of two point something percent is less than inflation, so that money's, we're losing money on that investment account. Um, so I'm very comfortable pulling some money from that. Um, so if we had to pull, um, you know, five hundred thousand from that, I think that's easily doable. Um, and then you're left with a three million dollars, and that's where I sort of thought of this loan we could get from the Department of Housing and Community Development for three million dollars. Um, if we wanted to, we could pay off more of that three million dollars in time. Um, and I know we have all a shared interest in trying to get more money, whether it's from the feds or the states, so that, again, you could take that money and pay off that loan. Um, so while we would get a three million dollar loan, um, the goal would be finding the Fed to pay to cover the cost. Um, we could pay for some of the costs if we don't want that debt obligation on the books. But again, considering it would be um not a hit on our budget because we have a current debt obligation coming off the books, um, I think it's it's feasible. So um, that's sort of my thoughts for moving forward on that. I think when the Pots Hall domino falls, it opens up a lot of other options for development with city properties, uh but we can talk more about that on a later date. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Luke. I think the other thing to point out um is that we did direct our um because Pots Hall has been a, was a priority in one of the meetings that we talked, we did direct our city manager to have a team. So there's a consultant, uh, there's a consulting firm that's been helping us on obtaining funds um for Pots Hall. So there is the plan and says, so this is the other part of the plan to make sure. And saying that, I think Luke also made it very clear that this does not mean that we're gonna just get the money from the bank and not go after more funding to make sure to upset the cost, so that way um we utilize as least amount of money that that we can and um and most funding comes from outside. But um there between this year and next, um, uh, we have the first amount of money coming in and then we also have um the remainder will add up to one point five that's been like in the, I guess, the promise sheet, right? And we'll continue pushing for um for definitely more outlets to figure out how to fund it. Jimmy, the floor is yours?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, as I said in the beginning, I think this is the one piece of property that we have to do ourselves, uh, because it's historical, developers really, I don't think we want, we wanna touch it. And we have to kind of create something that's a uh makes us community proud uh and other properties that we own, we can talk about working with developers, this one's ours. So I I think what we really, and this is the time for us to do it, you know, because of ARPA, because of some money we got from the state, so I think what we need specifically uh is kind of not just talk, but actually an action plan which we can approve. So I I think we should buy the June, and I know some work, uh, work session, and maybe we get a special session in, you know, July or some special session to approve it, after we have a a specific plan that says, you know, six million dollars, you know, we have a twenty fifty thousand dollars we got this year, we have some still some money left over, we have the one million dollars plus in next, in the budget, we have some money out of reserves of of uh, we go for borrowing some money, but a specific actually concrete plan we can approve uh to work on. Doesn't mean we can't revise it, doesn't mean we can't get extra money or make it less money. Uh, you know, so if we get more money, we could take less money out of reserves and we have more money. We could, you know, less money. But I mean, we need an actual, I think, plan to vote on by the June session. So we can actually move ahead of this. I mean, we've talked about, we kind of know what has to be done. Now we just have to do it. Thank you.
So I will, the only thing I will add, I think we definitely need to bring Pots Hall to the to the legislative session, so we could have like what you just talked about, um Jimmy. So that way we keep the ball rolling. Um, and that we could figure out what funds even from this year. Um, are, you know, so I would say, um, if we could get a a spreadsheet of what you talked about, Luke, and Mr. Kamali also goes, you know, we direct our staff to go out and um give us what the rate is, so that way um for the legislative uh session in June, we have the next discussion instead of working, waiting for the work session.
That's fine with me.
I'll be able to move up, so that way we um, at this point, it's like, um, I will say, I'm done talking about Pots Hall, we need to do something about Pots Hall and it seems like everybody seems to be going towards that direction.
Two more new priorities I can add.
Look at that. You're like by July thirty, you'll be all done. Um, so uh, Jared, um, and then Valerie?
Yeah, no, um, I mean, nothing more to add. This is other than, you know, Pots Hall is very important. Um, you know, it's again, as mentioned, it's a hard property to do something with. Um, and uh, we have some of the pieces. Uh, we have most of the pieces, I think, to take this forward. So um, you know, be very, very, uh, very supportive. Um, hey, literally, I did have a question for Luke. Um, and it was like, if if we take out like a um you know, a loan from DHCD and we we obtain other other funding, uh, does that like preclude us? Can we like pay that back with that funding or like pay like? How does or how how would that work? I'm just curious.
Um, I don't think there's a prepayment penalty, but Mr. Kamali can get the terms from DHCD to confirm, but um, you know, we can, I I think I would assume there'd be no prepayment penal penalty, Mr. Kam- but Mr. Kamali can get that. That can be a question. Kamali, you take to DHCD and get answered to us for June.
Yeah, other than that, I, yeah, love to, again, keep on, keep, keep this moving. Um, I think it's an important project. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared. But Valerie?
Um, thank you for bringing this up. Um, I definitely support um moving forward with um fixing up Pots Hall so it can be used. Um, just a question in terms of, I mean, right now, the state grants are coming out um in a couple of days, the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Are there any plans to go after funds through that, like the Community Legacy or the um National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund um for Pots Hall specifically at all?
Here's silence.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a, it's a, I think, I think Valerie, I've been at least in past conversations, it's every, anything we could get our hands on, so I think whatever we'd want to, I mean, obviously, we couldn't do everything, but um, you know, that's whatever we could, you could send that to the city manager and this would be a priority for us to try to get funding for.
Yeah, because I think you can get extra funds uh for for that, if if we're not, if we don't have other competing things, so I'd love to see us look into that a little, little more. But I support um working forward on this and once, once we have a plan, I'd like to see that, so, thank you.
So, perfect. So can we please aim at uh June to try to get this information so it's in front of us? So that we could have the next whole up discussion on it. Um, the other thing is um um, when it comes to possibly being a welcome center, we have, you know, we're the first city coming in from uh DC into Maryland, into Prentius County. And there's no welcome centers anywhere near. I think that's a reason why it also became very engaging for them to um feel like we could create this community space and at the same time, you know, highlight um our city, but also the county and the and the state, you know, um, because more business on this side of the line, it also helps us collectively. Including um not just the county, the state, but also directly the city. All right, so um, Mr. Kamali, anything to add?
No, Mayor, I appreciate that, but we have been already talking to DHCD. So we're waiting to get more information on the rates and hopefully I will have it before June work session.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. And as that information comes, just like send it to us, so that we're better prepared for um for the June work session and we could start building this document. And yeah, so basically, um, any opportunity, we could go for funding for 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 Pots Hall, because that seems to be like that project that we're gonna prioritize when it comes to infrastructure right now. Um, and the other thing is like, keep in mind, like, if we need to, um, if we're able to get some money, right? ARPA is there. I think we've been very fortunate that our team has been very diligent at going after money, so that's what we've been able to like, you know, although we approve certain money, like, you know, we're able to be a little bit flexible with it because um they've been able to upset some of the cost. So I I have um, I I had mentioned to Luke, like, I'm not returning one penny from, you know, the ARPA funding. Any penny that's not allocated by the time the deadline hits is going directly to Pots Hall, you know? Um, so not a worry there, at least for me. That's the way I feel. Um, so I don't wanna be like, there's one last dollar and I don't know what to use it, it's going to Pots Hall, right? That that's basically where we'll meet and move it through, right, to make sure this happens. All right, so I think um the staff knows what the next step is. Uh, Luke, can you work with Mr. Kamali? Can I, can you uh take lead on that to like get this document together for us in June?
Sure. Point of clarification.
Go ahead.
Was was the goal for the June legislative session, so we could vote, or was the, was it the June work session? I was, I'm not.
Legislative, so we could, we could see where we're at, you know? So that we like, if there's something that's missing, council could make the the, and then we could bring it to work session. What I don't want is to get to the June work session and then we're like, oh, and we need one more thing, so it delays another like two, three more weeks, right? And that way, like, if we already see it at the legislation and it's not been the second time we've seen it, right? So even if we have to put a a legislative section in top of the work session, then it could be done to um vote and approve it, you know? But I think that if we could have the, if we could have the pieces that we need, I mean, nothing stops us from voting on on this proposal moving forward in in June. Because we've discussed Pots Hall and possibility in financing. This is not the first meeting that we've done it collectively, right? This is like a couple meetings over, so this is definitely all business. But the document could be in front, so that way we could um, we we could work on the approval, um, if we need to. But if not, it gives us time to be able to digest it and and get it together. So the sooner we could get the document in front of us, the the sooner we're able to know um what we wanna do and present it to the community as well. Okay? So basically, aim at June uh legislative. So we are know where we're at, whether it's gonna be going up for discussion and vote or discussion, or we'll figure out where we're at. Okay? All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Um, and moving on to item number eight, review of committees. We have allocated twenty minutes. Mayor and council will review that committees. Um, Melissa, can you put um the committees on? Um, when um, when Scott departed, um, we um, we took on on extra committees as council to make sure that we had representation. Now that we um have Valerie as a selected um official, um, it allows for us to be able to um spread the, spread the wealth of the committees around. Um, so we're gonna do a run-through of a couple of the committees that are here. Some of them, um, you know, I'm happy to say the third committee was one of the ones that was completely like, you know, not functioning. Um, and by that, I'm saying like it had no member and, you know, it had been in pause, right? And uh Jimmy, you've done a good job of bringing it up, bringing it back with the work of um Nikki um and Jack. And and now we had um, we actually had a third team for um on regular day and they've been meeting and and being active, so that's great. So what you see in front of you is the vice mayor rotation. Um, you have uh Jared, who currently is in this rotation uh until next year, and then you have followed by uh Luke. Um, and then we'll figure out what the elections for May twenty-three look like in order to fulfill um the other spots in the rotations, because usually it's like we're one, we're two, we're one, we're two. And that's how it is. And um, and since Jared's already serving right now is um, who, you know, the whoever wins the elections on on next year will be able to be, you know, put into the rotations as well, uh, because two seats are open for next year. One for World One and one for World Two. Um, Jared, Jimmy and myself um have the same four-year terms together. So we still have a um three more years to go.
You mean Luke.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Jimmy. I was gonna give you a third, third time. Luke, Luke, Jared and uh myself. All right, perfect. So we're gonna start with Gateway Community Development, that is Luke, and he's been our liaison for forever and a day. And is there, let's go through them and then we'll figure out what, I mean, there's something that you want. Um, Anacostia Trail Historic Association, that is Jared. Then you have, and some of this was, once you appoint, we cannot unappoint you because they're, they're appointed, so you have to serve at least a year. Anacostia Trail Historic Association does Jared as well. PG CMA, that's me and Jimmy as my backup. Okay, MRBA, I've been doing liaison to that and Jimmy as a backup. And we need to update a lot of these names right there. Keep going. The two shit is on hold. Um, we don't have nobody on that one. Keep going. The Borough of Elections, we do not have an elected official over that one. Uh, we have a city staff because that will remain neutral. So Melissa is our our point person for that, um, assigned by Mr. Kamali. Uh, the third team, that is Jimmy, as his liaison, and we'll have to, um, Jimmy, did they have elections already for certain team or no?
We have uh election for the uh, the training coordinator. Uh, but people have to be actually certified as a cert uh before they actually are eligible to really be members. So we're gonna wait until people go through the training before we get nominees for the other positions.
Thank you so much for that, Jimmy, and you guys have advanced a lot. All right, so we have uh the
The next meeting is this Monday, by the way.
Thank you. Thank, I know, put a plug in, right? Uh, the next uh committee is MUTC, the Town Design Review Committee. Um, Jared, um, you're the liaison.
Yep.
Go on, and that one has to be updated, too. I think there's one person's longer there. The DRB, uh, Jimmy is the liaison. Let go.
Do we have anywhere, so uh Mayor, where we actually maybe make, see how many people us are, you know, how many we have? So like, I know I have, maybe we like have a line thing, how many each person has, so we can share it, so, I don't know. Maybe we can do a running count of like, you know, how many committees each person has.
I would say to you, um, no, we don't. That's, we need to have one, if that's what you're asking for, um, source.
Well, that way, yeah, that way maybe Valerie can take one of our.
Yeah, so you have ethics, that is Melissa, our point person, so it's a neutral body. I keep going. The green team is uh, Chessic. The tree commission, it says vacant. Anybody has the tree commission?
That's me.
Hello, Vacants. Go, go up, Melissa. There you go. So I'll tell you guys something as well, right? So I sit in this committees, but also have a lot of other city committees and um, association committees in behalf of the city that I said that are not in this list, right? Like the outreach committee for MML, right? That's like a whole entire, um, that's a whole entire committee. Um, so I am gonna be um letting go of a few of them, so that way I could like, because it's it's not sustainable for me to go through all the outside committees and the inside committees as well. Uh, the recreation committee is me, but if you want that one, um, you go, so you could have it, uh, Valerie's fine with me. Um, keep going, and that that one, we also have to update it. And you have the boy co-op, which is Jared, Community Garden is vacant. Um, Valerie, any? It, you wanna, Valerie, how are you feeling about the the community garden?
Um, I mean, yeah, I'm happy to plug in wherever is necessary. I mean, just depends on what um, what, what you guys wanna do, I guess, I don't know. Um, you know, if there's committees you wanna like offload on me, I'm happy to take, you know, two or three. Um, just let me know.
So the community garden, I mean, we could put your name on it if you're fine with it, because that one like this needs a representative. Um,
Sure.
And then, and definitely, it's this.
Can she do the recreation, Mayor, if you're not gonna do that? Because I know that needs somebody.
Um, Jimmy, I just told her, yeah, she could have it if she wants it.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
I'm loading that one. Um, so you want that one, Valerie? I'll go ahead and put you there as well.
Sure.
All right, and I'll be, I'll be uh your backup, not a problem, but that will alleviate, because I'm running into a couple of meetings at the same time. And act, and and it's hard to be in two places at once. That's the reality as much as I try to be, it's 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 hard. Um, keep going. Uh, parking test informant, I don't think we've done nothing with that one, so that's mainly like a staff one, so, I mean, I mean, if you want that one, it's fine, the scholarship committee, that one, I I am, I'll stick to that one. And can you change it from council member to mayor? That'll be my edit. And you have the art commissions, you have Luke. And do me a favor, council members, as you have this document, can you uh, Melissa created a Google Docs document? Can you please update uh who the members are? Because I could tell by this document, it has not been updated. Um, including my committees, right? Um, keep going, so it's fine, Melissa, you'll you'll work on it. And then they'll change that email address too later. Uh, the arts commission, we have Luke. Okay, keep going. Then we have, what else? The char review comedian, the police. The char review comedian, the police advisory board, Valerie, they don't have a representative at this point. The police advisor will become active um ideally by June, by this June, right? And we'll put a call out. Um and then we have the char review committee that um that we still haven't like addressed yet. Okay? So let us know what you want. So um for recreation, Melissa, put Valerie as seat and that could be her backup. Right? Um so that way, um I, I will be support, but you know, I mean, I'll be there if need be, but that way I don't have to split myself into two people.
Mayor?
Yes, Jimmy?
I, I would only just, you know, I, I only have two committees and why I'm glad to get rid of one of them, too, is not that big of a load. Uh Luke, you have a lot. I mean, I don't know if you, I mean, you can do as many as you want, but I don't know if there's something you wanna offload.
Yeah, I would, I, I have, I have too many right now. And, you know, I I, the, the one that I, 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 I think I'd like to, to, to think about offloading is, is um the Gateway CDC. I've been, I've been on that one for a while and um you know, I enjoy that work and I'll probably still be, be in, involved a little bit, or if they need something, um, um, I can always help out. But um I think they could use new energy um there. Um and uh I think they've got a lot of neat projects on the horizon. Um you know, the media arts lab is, is a, is a, is a success and the Brentwood Arts Exchange, obviously. And I think there's a lot of ability for them to do more, um especially in sort of, you know, helping each other out. So, uh you know, the city can help the, the CDC out, the CDC can help the city out by bringing in grant money and stuff that, that only they can apply for. So I think, you know, if, if somebody would be, be willing to do that.
I would say, Luke, just clarify something for me. The CDC was, isn't appointed one by mayor and council, we sent a letter to the CDC to let them know who our vote is, right? So that one, we will have to go through a process to like get you out, not just in paper, like the other ones, correct? Like the Atha, I think the CDC and um the Chesapeake, I believe, are the three that we um we appointed, we sent information out to let them know that you guys are the liaison, cause you guys are the vote for the city, correct?
I don't know if any paper was handed for my appointment. I don't know if that was ever done.
I think it was.
Well, for my, I, I think an email is fine, I think, but from my experience, I was on the CDC for a long time, just to like
And I apologize.
Let them know who the representative is.
So I will say, um so just, I'm not saying you cannot upload it, you a hundred percent quality, I just wanna make sure, make sure we do not lose, lose that um that, that point to make sure we address it, right? Whether it means like, you know, and by a paper, I mean like a whole like and therefore be at that, right? I've been more like, you know, we communicate officially, you represent the committee and you, you hold the vote for us. You know, and you're the liaison to the, to the city, so that way you come and report back to whatever um there is, so support. Alright, perfect. So um Valerie, you have, I guess you went from maybe one to like at least seven. Um so
Yeah, I'm happy to take it.
And go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to take the Gateway CDC, that's fine.
Perfect. So put a Valerie as seat and Chesek as backup. Is that fine, Luke?
Yeah, that works.
Alright, perfect.
And I think you become, yeah, you're like a, you, you're, I think you're technically a board member, not a liaison.
No, you're the, our liaison to the city, but for the gateway, you become a board member, yeah. By, by the rules of the, of the agreement that we have with them. So yeah, she's, she'll become a board member, so we'll have to put that um, the document through. When do they finish the year term on Luke?
Um, you know, I don't know, and I, I, I'd like to be able to tell Pat and Tony myself as well. Pat Thornton, I can be director, so um I can tell them and introduce you. And then, then I could, I can ask them, Selena, I'll ask them how they'd wanna do it.
I think the city still needs to send an email regardless. Um you're, you're welcome to tell them first, right? But I think that way we make it standard that this is the way it works.
Yep.
You know, because um it, it makes life a little bit easier for us. Um okay, perfect. Uh Valerie, there were two other ones in the bottom. I don't know how you feel about the other two. Or how does anybody else feels about the other two? I know Jimmy was like, I don't have enough committees, I want more work, Jimmy. You, you could, you could take two shit, I think it's on hold, I, I don't think we're gonna do nothing with it right now, if somebody wants to take on it. Right, then we have um, we had the two shit, we have the police advisor and we have the char committee. Council, um how are you feeling? And the first open now, now that, the reason why I gave Valerie the first pick is mainly because like she didn't have none, right? So we, she was a zero and also she's a new council member. Okay, but at least now she has two. If not three, two or, two or two of them, I believe. Alright, perfect. Um uh Jimmy?
Well, I was gonna say, I think in the police advisory board, we should probably hold off until we actually create the, you know, we actually do and have it created, then we can see who wants to be the liaison. I want to do that once it's created.
Be the liaison. The only reason why I said to have a liaison even
I, I, I say it again.
I said, the reason why it would be good to have a liaison, now so that way you make sure you push through to make sure like it's um where I'm pointing, I'm making sure the chart, like you know, what you're doing right now is basically what, what
Okay, I, I'm going to do that one, okay?
So there you go. So uh put Jimmy under that one, so that we could carry through to make sure that, you know, everything that has to do with it. If you wanna like, once it's built, you wanna get, you know, get out then, go ahead, right?
No, that's fine.
If you wanna run, I don't know if anybody else wants to take up on it, but um that's it. I'm happy to be your backup if need be, right? But um not necessarily. Um and then the char, you always wanna put it on hold until we um discuss it further.
Correct. I, I'll try and, I, I was trying to get some more background of other places I've been doing charter. So hopefully by the fall, I'll have some, we can talk about that again.
Perfect, thank you. Jared, I haven't heard from you. How are you feeling? I think Valerie needs another four committees.
No, I'm, I'm, I, I'm, I'm good with mine. I was gonna step up if needed for another one, but it looks like um I think it looks like Valerie's taken on a uh, taken on a couple and a, a good couple, I think. So um MUTC definitely, uh Atha and then my co-op is what I have. And I'm happy to, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good, but um let me know if we need to reshuffle.
I think that right now looks good. I think that the fact that I, uh you know, I, I was able to, um, thank you Valerie for stepping up um for the red committee, because um I, I still have um the MML meetings, the OE, and I know like uh Jimmy's part of, of, of one of the committees as well for them. Um I also have the mayor's association, um PG CMA does very uh work-heavy as well, that is, that is in this list, right? So there's a lot of other stuff that um, that, that I have to um say representing the city that um are quite a bit, and um we'll figure out, I mean, as, as we continue joining the, the conferences and, and working through it. Alright, so do me a big favor, council members. You have your list of committees in front of you. Um Valerie, I'm gonna, the next recreation committee, I will go with you, introduce you as the new liaison and that I'm backup. Okay, so that we have a smoother transition and I'll let the red committee know where we're at. And the other thing is, um if it's one of your um older um committees, please look at this and figure out who's no longer in your committee. Uh when I say we need to clean up the document, I'm a mouse and that I'm gonna look at and resurface it to try to clean it up a little bit more. Um part of the things that we're having issues is that um not all the committees come to us to get the members appointed. And the way the city has, you know, worked within the last year, and thank you communications, Melissa and Kamali, Mr. Kamali for also doing this, right? The resident applies, there is an application with information, right? As well as the estimate that we keep on file, you know, so that way we know who the members are. And um if they're no longer members, we could exit them out of this list. But this name should also be on our website, so that way people know who represents them, cause um all these committees, like you know, not all the, but most of them, they're either voting committees or they vote on funding, that is like, you know, taxpayers' dollars, right? And we need to make sure that um, that the other committee members also know when they're happening. So that way they could also get involved, something interesting, because one of the biggest complaints I've had um for years is that um it becomes very much like, it, unless, unless you know somebody, you don't know what's going on, right? And I wanna make sure um that this thing continues to happen, because I think that also will allow us to make sure that we're diversifying the, the committees. But also like if residents wanna join a meeting, they could always like pop in and, and, and listen or bring their ideas or, or their suggestion. And the other thing like, whether you have a board and you have residents coming, you know, that they're welcome. That it's not just like a board deciding and a board talking, but it's also committee members could go in and, and give their feedback and, and bring ideas. Um that also will allow for uh inter minutes and records to show who are the members of these committees. And usually they do a little sworn in, like you know, like a document that they have to sign with the city clerk. Um but the city clerk is the holder of this um, of this information, cause a lot of times um you know, it seems like, you know, we don't always know who's in the committee, so we need to clear that up and that way we'll move forward the things that we need, so it's more cohesive. So I would like to say thank you guys so much. Um also, please notice there are staff liaisons along with it, please coordinate with them. So that way um, you know, um you guys work in coordination. And if something is needed, those are the staff members that um the city manager appoints to the committee. So that way they help you um maneuver, work through like the various uh things that are needed. Because um, because it's not just something that's like, okay, if it's, you know, if somebody's having an event, it's just not the event. But also like, you know, finance, you know, economic development, the city clerk, communications, the city manager, all of them have to get involved in one way or another, where there's two orders of get permits and work on A, B, C, D and G. So it takes a toll on the staff if we're not organized, so that way we need to also cohesively organize, so that we could, could add to the master calendar, so that way the staff knows there's two events, three events. And the other thing is like, they, they have done a very beautiful job at taking a, a weekly notice that says this is everything that's happening in the week. And that was true also, um, it's also includes like some of the committees where we know that they're having meetings. So that way the communities inform um how to reach them as well. So that's all I have to say on this point. Um anything else anybody needs to add? If you guys just, don't say anything, we can move on to the next item, or you guys have a question. Alright, go ahead, Valerie.
Just really quickly, I, I also think um as we continue to streamline our committees, I think that would be very helpful, especially as we start to think through our strategic vision for the city, um and getting the committees to make sure that they're providing input. Um you know, so that we have a structured uh vision planning system.
A hundred percent, and I, and, and, and that's the reason why the strategic vision is important, so that can we know where we're going, the committees that we're all putting together. I think it may things we synchronize and many things we don't, so that was the clear path of where we're going. And we're pushing, cause it's gonna take the whole city, every single one of us, from volunteers to staff, to elected officials, to move towards that direction. So a hundred percent there with you um as well. Alright, perfect. Thank you so much, Valerie. Alright, moving on to the next item. Um ARPA discussion and update. Uh the mayor and council will discuss the status of projects for ARPA. Alright, so I know Mr. Kamali, you had um, you had um something to present to us under this point. Uh Luke, you have your big sheet in front of us, so that we could do a quick update on the and where we're at and anything information that we need to fill.
Yeah, let me, give me a minute to pull it up here.
Thank you so much. And in the meantime, um council, if you have any update, one of those items, please make sure um to address them as we go down the list, okay?
Was this one from um April, right? The last one was April.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Let me pull that up.
Melissa, that's correct.
Yep, cause it's May.
Okay. Yeah, May's practically gone. I mean, it's hard to believe, we're gonna be
April fifteen nineteen, I'm sorry.
Yep.
A month ago, wow. Okay, oof. Alright, thank you so much. So Luke, uh can you go ahead and, and walk us through this and counsel, um and Mr. Kamali? As we see the spots that we might need to give an update, um go ahead and plug it in, so that way we know where um, where we're at. And if anything else is being proposed, um this would be a good time to um, to propose it, okay? Alright, Luke, go ahead.
Um so we have these spending categories again on the left. Um we, we, we understand that we're only reporting um under the, the category of, you know, we have less than ten million. So it's sort of a different category, but um you know, the mayor made the comment that it's still good to have the categories that we started with, so people know where we're spending most of our money. Um so this first category is stormwater management. The project at thirty-third and Perry is incorporated into the, the Memorial Park, Rhode Island Avenue, Perry Street cost estimates. Um because it's part of that project. Thirty-first and Perry, the cost of that is now just seventy-nine thousand, cause we got a, a, a bond month uh bill from the state for five hundred and thirty. Um so that's great. Um just flagging that, Mr. Kamali, you know, the, the residents are expecting a community meeting um for this one. Um with the option that folks talked about, about closing off Eastern Avenue, so I hope that's still a part of what um
A point of clarification before you move on. The, the check that was awarded to us on my rainy day for the Green Street Projects, where does that falls under?
Sorry, what's up?
So uh we received um a check from um Senator Augustine for my raining there for the Green Street Projects, where does that falls under?
Where the staff?
Mayor, how much is that check for?
Mr. Kamali, do you have, I mean, Melissa or Mr. Kamali have the check? For the thirty-fifth street one.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that the five thirty?
That's the five thirty. Yeah.
So because the question was asked, and I told him, I just wanna make sure we didn't miss it in, in what you were presenting when it came to. They thought it was other additional money, but it's for that money that, that, you know, that was, that was given.
Right, right, right. Okay, um so Mr. Kamali, just, just make sure that, you know, the residents there are, are awaiting sort of a community meeting and, and the potential of closing down Eastern Avenue there. Um so I hope Ecoside and LID are on that.
LID.
Yep, okay, great.
Yes.
Um then the, the tree commission's request for the climate resilience and stormwater mitigation urban tree planting for twenty thousand. You know, we've done the outdoor classrooms for Thomas Stone and Mount Rainier Elementary for twenty thousand each. We've done the access to public resources for Hispanic or Latino populations for fifty thousand. Um we've gotten
I know that we already handed that money for that one, uh Luke, for the access to resources, that money has already been awarded.
Okay.
And it was, I mean, what meeting was it on, Mr. Kamali? It was the last meeting, right?
Yes, and the money, the, the money was awarded last Friday. You presented the check, mayor, for fifty thousand dollars.
Correct, so that money is already like in their hands, so I wanna make sure we make a note, so that way it's not just green. But that way, um in our internal reporting, um we also have it accounted for.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um the small business grants, the fifty thousand dollars, we've also awarded those. Um so I can add that. We awarded how many in total?
Ten, ten businesses, fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And we have
Go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Yeah, and we have two more applications that, that we're waiting for the information. And so hopefully, if they could go through, we may have to ask mayor and council for allocating probably ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
So why don't we propose, um Luke, since this is the last two one, can we, uh I would like to propose for us to um um up the amount from fifty to like um seventy, so that way um it's there, so that we could vote on it for the June one. So that way um, that way we could move forward, so you could put twenty pending um allocation of approval. Um okay, so that we could um, we could have that, so that way in June, we could, we could vote on it. If need be, by then, hopefully, Mr. Kamali is able to provide us, uh let us know what, what else is needed, and then we could move forward with that.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
For that ARPA vote. Um and then food security, we've um allocated three hundred thousand for um rental relief, we've allocated fifty thousand for. Um and are, is that whole, are those applications, is it complete now?
Um so Mr. Kamali sent it to all of us and um I'm making one edit. And I'll send it to you guys, so that way you see it, but you guys had it in your inbox like for a couple of weeks back. So um I'll go ahead and resend it just in case uh it wasn't uh during Valerie's uh e, uh time. So that we also has it in, and I'll make the addition, cause I'm looking at it um right now as we speak, so that way it goes live.
My apologies. I I did not respond on that. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Kamali.
So if you guys go have your inputs by like no later than Friday, so I'll send the application forward like tonight and I resend it and um and I'll send my changes and then that way it could go out um. It could publicly go out as soon as possible. And that is for rental and utilities, utilities for back rent and utilities, um utilities. The legal system part is not covering the application. That's gonna be something else. Okay? So just put in a different line, Luke, so that way we don't erase the fact that we were thinking of doing something and for that matter, when it comes to the to the legal aspect, because that might be able to fall into the um rent stabilization part, right? Um, as as some of our residents might be potentially um fighting uh fighting cases.
Okay.
Okay.
And then Richardson Park, um, this one could be, do we know that this is that we're that we're getting a hundred and six thousand dollars for Richardson Park such that we could lower this figure now?
I will say we'll leave it right there, Luke, because the price for the park is gonna be a little more expensive than a hundred and six. And I'll tell you guys why, right? Um, for career day, I brought like boards of like for the kids to vote on what they want to see in the parks, right? Looking at some prices or what it looks like for a playground, especially all the thing that we need to take for Richardson Park is gonna be more than a hundred and and six, even a hundred and fifty. So I say leave that alone for right now so that way um based on what um, what is decided to do in that space, because remember we're also asking for a gate alongside uh but playgrounds are very expensive. Um, e- even the more more simple one is is pretty um. And this is the only park we have as a city that has a playground. So I will say leave it alone and then like that we could get the cost estimate or what it looks like because based on some of the prices that I looked at, even from a catalog from last year, i- it was um, it was a lot. So the youth are already starting to um, I'm sorry, starting having conversation with the youth uh and what they'd like to see in the park. And I'm I'm gonna work with Mr. Kamali and Rosio um to have a whole um, a whole program to make sure that we get feedback and the teachers are on board um to have their kids, you know, to have the students and even the parents. I run into a lot of kids on Marania Day um about the kids like being ready to like design this park um and getting heavily involved. So the the seeds of knowledge have already been placed there and they're looking forward to this project and being active members of um this decision making. So I'll say leave it there and um and then we'll figure out what it looks like um if we need more money than just like forty thousand a- a- above the one oh six.
Okay. Um, and then the social worker we funded for a hundred and twenty thousand, that's forty thousand um annually um to move from a part time to a full time social worker. Vaccine incentives for ten thousand dollars, those are spent. Um, the bonus money is awarded. I lost my screen there for a second. Um, that's two hundred and sixty two thousand. The program manager, um, Mr. Kamali, have we um, is there any update on hiring a program manager for our ARPA expenditures?
Well, I've been doing it. I've been doing it with Melissa and I don't think we need that one in place anymore. And I'm able to handle the ARPA project.
That would be a lot of money to save us.
Yes, three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, what do you guys want to do with this?
Can we put a hold on it just in case?
Yeah, can I?
When you finish it, let me, when you go through, I have something to add.
Go ahead, Jimmy. Jimmy, go ahead.
Well, I I look, I almost finished with your list.
Um, yeah, almost.
He's stopping and do you have anything to add about this specifically?
No, no, just afterwards.
Okay, Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, I I just want to say I want to leave that program manager line in there. Mr. Kamali, just because, I mean, the, you know, the if 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 we're doing some like kind of like quick administration stuff like uh, you know, food security or something like that, that's very straightforward, but like, you know, there's a lot of things in here. I think that the 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 burden on implementing and the tracking and the obligations we have related to ARP are not insignificant. So I mean, I I you know, just just want to be mindful to leave you enough resources to uh, you know, run the run the city and handle all the day to day stuff that I know is a lot. So I I would like to just, you know, make sure we leave that resource if you need it. Um, at least in the short term, because, you know, we are, we are adding a lot of short term, one off things to the city's plate and city staff's plate. So I just wanted you to know that. I mean, that's an allowance in the ARP and that that resource and that support is there if you need it and should you need it. So.
Yeah. So even if it was to have people to work on on information and support um under you, I think that that will be um on it, but I think definitely leave it. All right. So Valerie, do you have anything to add about this point? Or or not?
Um, no, I think I think it's fine to leave the resources in there for now. Um, I think, you know, it's, I mean, yeah, I think it's fine to leave it in there as as is.
All right, perfect. Uh, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Luke, with the list.
Um, the ARPA consultant, that's a hundred thousand dollars for for uh Himmler. Um, the thirty three hundred blocks of Rhode Island Avenue and Perry Street, including the stormwater fixes at thirty third and Perry and Memorial Park, that's one million. Um, that is, have the permit applications been submitted for this, Mr. Kamali? Do you know?
Yeah, uh, LID is working on it and we have some issue with with park and planning. So right now we are right there and we're trying to get what they were asking us. You know, they made some comments on the drawings and we're trying to fix it and once we get this one going, then the application is gonna be start flowing in in the calendar.
Okay. Okay. Um, uh, Pots Hall, we may want to talk about tonight, but we'll we'll leave that there.
Let me, that's what actually we wanted to say something. That's all right.
We go to the green parts and then we'll come back to the the white ones because right now it's up there and they will like we do the.
Okay.
That will keep and you'll be the first one on the on the on the roll call, okay? Go ahead.
The Melinda Miles building is a hundred and fifty thousand. That that construction is starting, right, soon?
We just started yesterday and hopefully we're gonna finish it in next four to six weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the scholarship for students, which is the sixty three thousand, twenty one thousand annually. Um, so that I'll offer seven three thousand dollar scholarships for students, which is a a lot more than the one thousand we used to do, which is will be great.
The applications are out. Please send that out through your mediums so people who apply. Um, because the deadline is fast approaching. Uh, so we need to make sure that um that we we are putting it out as much as we humanly possibly can. And if you're in Oakhurst, there are high school students uh in your ward. Um, what I did in the past is like I drop applications or I call the parents, right? Because this isn't their parents radar and necessarily the kids. Um, Melissa did reach out to the various, there's a whole list of schools, the university and trade schools to let them know and um she's doing a second reach out so that way they're aware it's there and and we need applicants. And some of them come in a little bit last minute and I would like to say that, you know, like I said last time, we have kids that have graduated, gone on to masters, right? Um, and I, well, because they're the more kids, right? But and and also how do you call it? They made the presences, the ding lists, and they're continuing to be highly involved in the community. So that's definitely a a plus and they become youth ambassadors. So please um reach out to the parents because they need to make sure that every single one of those scholarships are fulfilled. Go ahead.
Okay, um, the next, and that's it. And so with um everything we've allocated has been two point seven million and we've got about two point six million um remaining unallocated. Um, obviously, if we did not allocate the three hundred thousand for the program manager, um, and if we um and come to think of it, we're actually getting close to the to end of the federal fiscal year. Um, so if, you know, that that would that would go down to two hundred, even if we kept it on the books. And then if the Richardson Park, you know, that may be another savings of fifty grand. So you may have more than what's even listed here. Um, and that's it.
Can you make a note on it, Luke, of what's this potential additional location, that twenty thousand for the business so that we we don't lose track of it?
Yeah.
Under the green one, right? And then it's like we'll give uh Jimmy, uh, we could go, I think, covering all the updates, so these have already approved and we have mentioned. I'm gonna move it on to you. I know you wanted to mention Pots Hall. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Right, uh, so I'm gonna kind of propose uh tentatively that we actually maybe put a million dollars as part of the package. The Pots Hall, it's not money that has to be done in this year, but the following year as we put together a package uh of doing stuff. And that mean we can't do some of the stormwater stuff immediately, but I think as we try and figure out how do we put together a package, uh, taking some money out of the ARPA funds to do that. I mean, this is like a you know, time to get this thing done and putting together the financing thing, I think should include those, though, up to a million dollars of ARPA to to actually get this whole thing done.
Thank you. Uh, council, feedback on that? How are we feeling? Uh, Valerie, Jared, Luke?
Um, yeah, I would agree. Um, I mean, if we're putting together a financial package to look at and a plan of action for this, then I think definitely having some funding from ARPA wouldn't be a terrible idea. Um, especially if we can use the other funds for other things within the city um as we go forward.
Thank you so much, Jared.
Yeah, I'm actually, you know, as we try to put together funding package and try to find money, you know, this ARPA funding has a deadline for our expenditure of it. So I'm actually, actually, Jimmy, I think that's a really great idea. Um, and would like to uh concur in the in that in that pathway forward.
I I think it's twenty twenty six, right?
It has to be compromised by twenty twenty six, yeah.
Yep, but I mean, that's not as far away as we think it is. That's all I'm saying. So.
Oh, a hundred percent. We're already in June practically.
Yep, and so I, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, Jared. Uh, Luke?
I I I agree. I think that um we gotta get this done. This is an opportunity to finance a big chunk of it that's and you know, it's it's not money that that we had to to get taxpayers for or try to go after. I think, you know, as much as we want to get as much as we can from the state, as much as we are, we're gonna, we're gonna get one point five, hopefully, here, knock on wood. Um, you know, and we'll try to get more. I think it's, you know, being able to pull a million from ARPA is great. And I think, you know, if we don't go forward with the program manager, you know, we've got Richardson Park, we got some money for um, you know, this uh, you know, we s- we would still have. Um, so I'm looking down here. Our remaining funds are like two, six, five, six. If you put back the program manager, it's two, nine. If you get some money from Richardson Park, you're almost at three. And so even allocating a million for this, um, you may still have, you know, a little bit less than two million considering the 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 um business aid we might do. So um, I think it still leaves us with money to do things with. I in my mind, I just, I know, Selena, it's probably on your mind, Newton Street. I just want to keep keep putting that in people's ear. Um, but uh, uh, you know, I think that that one million for Pots Hall makes makes too too much sense to pass up, I guess.
Oh, good job. Thank you, Luke. Anything? Okay. Um, I will say to you guys, it's like this is the reason why I wanted to do the priority tonight. Because if we're all in sync and we're all saying this is a priority, then let's put our, you know, our mouth over money. Is that right? So let's make sure we put on it. I think that if, you know, it looks like we're gonna get the one point five that gives us one, you know, one point, two point five million of money that we didn't even account for that we have now. So that's what I said, um, we are in the right time to get this done, right? The loans are are relatively low and they might continue to get lower, hopefully, right? But the reality is like they're not gonna be going anything but up, right? So it allows for us to do that. The other thing is that I will put up, where's Newton Street? Uh, Luke, find me Newton Street.
Um, down here.
So I will definitely ask mayor and uh and council, duh, I still think as a customer, sometimes, right? I I will ask councils for us to also move forward to approving uh Newton Street. It's very severely damaged. It's one of the worst streets that we have and we need to take care of it. Um, and the the very, very south side of the city has been a very lonely uh for many years. Um, and I know me and Luke have worked very much. Um, you know, well, there was um the alley that was repaired, right? Uh, but that street needs a lot of work on it. So I definitely would like for you guys to look at it and move forward into um either approving on it or seriously looking into infrastructure funding to see if that could be um fulfill or both, right? Put it under ARPA right now and and apply for the infrastructure. And if it falls under infrastructure, then we uh financed it from there. But we definitely need to like move forward with that one because um it's been a long time coming and 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 I know we have mentioned that we were gonna take care of it and I think some of the legwork already started to getting some investigation. And I understand we have a lot of infrastructure going on the city right now. But we definitely could move it forward for a vote and and that way um we at least, uh, Mr. Kamali knows that's in the table, things that need to be done um this this upcoming, this upcoming year or years.
Selena, I I apologize and it's it's co- it's the COVID fog.
Um, you're fine.
Yeah, um. Can you remind me like why why is Pots Hall, Pots Hall is eligible under ARP? Luke or Selena, Mr. Kamali?
When the ten million, we do anything we want with it.
Well, that's right, that's right. Okay, that that's what it was. I'm sorry. I remember something something changed and okay, from the initial.
Once we change from um to follow to follow the ten million rule, that's the reason why I wanted to make sure to bring it to, you know, council to an open meeting for us to agree and give direction to our city manager. So that way we openly discuss it and agree on it. It allows to be able to fund things that we will commonly will fund. So this is something that we will fund ourselves. And that's the reason why. And I'm answering because I want to make sure also the community knows. And the reason why we do it in this pockets as well is because I also want to make sure that we could follow through where our funding is going. A lot of our funding is going in the very need um, you know, water storm management and working on on be able to address a lot of climate change issues that we see coming. Um, and that's the reason why um it allows to do art, the Pots Hall allows us to do like, you know, other other best of the infrastructure as well. Okay? All right. Any other that answer your question, Jared?
It did, yes.
Perfect.
I am supportive of the Newton Street adding that if you want to make it green or whatever color.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you, Valerie. Where you're at?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think this all sounds good. Um, I think, you know, it might make sense based on the traffic and street and sidewalk study that we do. We hold some money in reserve for funding that if we can. I don't know. I'm not entirely sure if we can do that or not, but that might make sense to have some funds for for those recommendations that we, when they're recommended. And as long as this public's okay with them, we can move forward quickly on this of on fixing our traffic issues.
Yeah, this this one is more than just like traffic. It's a whole mess back there. It's like, you know, not just the street directions, the the water, the storm, I mean, they need rain gardens. I mean, it's um, it is, it's a lot. I know some of the works started working, but uh it's definitely the area that needs um quite quite a bit of help of in in that in that um in that spot in those streets. I mean, Mr. Kamali, when he was probably was director and now Rosio, they've done miracles at trying to fix that street, but the reality is like it needs more than like just little bandages here and there. I mean, nothing falls apart like it feels like every winter and every summer, uh, we have um holes in there that if they don't take care of them right away, they become um a whole pool set. Okay, perfect. So Luke, I think that that's at least two more items you could put to the June uh moving forward. Um, anything else council to discuss on this item because time is up? So let me know if you want to move on from this. Um, or um you would like to add time. It's up to you.
I'm good.
Move on.
Move on, move on.
Valerie?
Let's move on.
All right, perfect. Luke?
Yeah, I will um, I'll I'll total this all up and send this document to everybody um later. So I'll stop sharing. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Luke. And also thank you so much for following up with this and um um, what's it called? Um, Mr. Kamali, please make sure that this document is also on the website so that was easier for the community to follow through. And, you know, we are working very hard to make sure that, you know, it's a transparent process, you know, so that what we have updates upon updates upon updates. And that's the reason why I've asked, you know, I asked Melissa to put the number of the update to it, right? So that way there's not like it's the first up is like update number sixteen on this, right? So it's it's very well um documented. Um, and you and thank you for the support. The other thing is like the to let the residents do know that the ARPA report was submitted on time. Uh, so that has already been submitted and Mr. Kamali, what are the items, what are? Uh, so that has already been submitted. And Mr. Kamali, what are the items, what are the items that were reported on? It was the food and what else?
It was the food, the consulting services, Mr. Hamler, small businesses. They had the fifty thousand dollars food distribution and uh. It was close to four hundred thousand dollars. These are the items that we had to do the reporting. This physical, uh, this year, but next year, hopefully, we're gonna have a. You know, more to be reported.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, one more thing, guys. I'm gonna ask for five more minutes to be added to this item because Mr. Kamali has the. A report he wanted to add before we skipped it. He asked, um, and we said we were gonna allow him to speak in this, in this, in this. In this section, okay? So can I have five minutes on the clock, uh, council, please?
So. Melissa, can you let me share my screen again?
So you guys will properly move, so I'm assuming all of you guys properly second. So I will add five more minutes. Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I sent the information, the proposal for. Uh, fixing the second floor, the insurance building, thirty four oh nine Road Allen Avenue. That's the second floor above our code compliance right now. So I have a proposal. To get it up and running for forty thousand dollars. So, and I have shared the information with you. And I do appreciate if we could do that, at least we could utilize the building because right now the building is aging and. We need to fix it and make sure that at least we could. Create some revenue for the city. And then later on, whatever the mayor and council would like to do it. Uh, you know, this is something that we can look at it down the road.
So, Mr. Kamali, may I ask you a question for clarification? And thank you for putting this together, right? Because I, you definitely know that that's one of my priorities and, and it was also like on, you know, part of like um, us knowing where's that. This would be aside from Pots Hall. Um, in the Miles building that we're currently working on, this would be the only, the last building in the puzzle that has not been fixed, correct?
Yes, the second floor is the only place that has not been touched for past. I could say since I've been here.
Yeah, and it's a big space too, is even bigger than the bottom place. All right, perfect. So council, uh, Mr. Kamali, so you're covering, um. So that we'll open it up to council. Council thoughts on this?
Time's running with me.
Okay, uh, Jamie, it's time for moving forward for the June agenda. Jared?
Um, I'm, yeah, I'm supportive.
Thank you, Valerie.
I think this makes sense, especially if we can um, produce revenue through the activities that we sponsor.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Luke.
Yeah, I think it's um, you know, it's gonna take a while to, to, to do Pots Hall. So. You know, we're, we're not gonna be able to do anything with these buildings next door until we kind of figure that out. So I think it makes sense to make this space. Um, usable so that we can rent it out to a business. Um. And so I'm, I'm confident Ron can find somebody we can rent that out to and have some revenue coming into the city.
Thank you so much. And the other thing is like, the longer we do not fix it, the worse it gets. So this might have been a. A five, ten thousand dollar fix. Now it's like a bigger fix because of it. Um, I seen that space up there um, a couple of times and um. This will allow for all of us, you know, once the miles and this one get fixed. They will have all working spaces um. Available. The other thing I wanted to touch before we go anywhere. Um, I definitely want, uh, I'm gonna add, I'm, I'm asking um, your feedback on this, but. I would like for us to look into solar panels for the rest of our buildings, including uh, Public Works. P D, um, and any other building that city manager could uh, bring us information back for ideally like the June section. So that we know what the cost will be to retrofit them so that we could create, generate some funding out of that as well. Um, but so I'm letting council know. Um, if it's okay with you guys, um. We will could, if we could direct our city manager to look into that so that way he could bring a presentation forward, um. To figure out what it looked like for Public Works, P D and any other building, Mr. Kamali, that you think should have the solar panels?
Yeah, Melinda Miles, Melinda Miles.
And the Melinda Miles building for us to retrofit it with solar panels, um. Okay, uh, council, are we, are, how are we feeling towards that?
Uh, my, my only question on some of this is. Uh, if there's any kind of development, like future. Plans for the change in any of those buildings. So Public Works, yes. But the Melinda Miles building, if we're hundred percent sure it's gonna stay the way it is, it's fine, but. I wouldn't want to spend a lot of money if we decide something else is gonna happen in that space. So I just raised a question.
But are you okay with him exploring the, for solar panels?
Oh, exploring the ideas, yes, yes.
For storing and bring the information forward, so that we step one.
Sure, that's, that's a no going if I.
So perfect. Valerie, uh, Jared?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm sort of exploring options for that. Um. Um, yeah, that's fine.
Perfect, Jared.
Yep, I'm uh, supportive too. And I think just for anyone still talking this, which I'm not sure anyone is, because it's super late, um. Mr. Kamali, those, all those buildings are on the DC feeder line to Pepco, right? Yes. So, so those, those buildings, just for, if anyone's still listening, uh, those buildings. Uh, have the ability to access the uh, SREC credits that DC pays, which are. Pretty substantial uh, relative to what Maryland pays, um, which is like fifty a credit instead of like four hundred. So. Um, you know, they, the panels would potentially generate a uh. Uh, some, some revenue for the city depending, depending on size and number and so forth. Um. And I agree on Jimmy's point. Let's explore this definitely. But like also, Mr. Kamali, just kind of noodling on what happens to panels that we. Install. And then if the building sells, how do we just make sure to kind of, you know, recover that or? Do we hang on to them or still? Do we get to hang on to them? Probably not, but you know, just think about how that plays out. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Luke.
Yeah, totally su- support, um, exploring, um, ha- hesitant with the, with the Melinda Miles building because I think there's a development potential there, but um. Definitely, definitely want to explore all our buildings. Thanks for bringing that up there.
Thank you. Um, and the reason why I did it under ARPA is because in case we need to utilize ARPA funding to be able to do that, right? The other thing is like, you have to remember, some of these things that we talk about, even with that property might be many, many years before it happens. So in that, we could be making good DC uh, solar uh, money in that property. And if we decide to develop into something else, we always still live with the, with the fact that they're already made up enough money to um. To upset the cost, you know? Um, but I'm definitely not ready to let go of the building. Um, and, and we'll figure it out. But right now it's just basically for Mr. Kamali to explore what it looks like, what it will cost and um. What the possibilities are. In order for us to have an understanding of what it'll be in case, you know, um. Money needs to be attached to it and, and, and since we have ARPA, we must, we'll utilize it. But P D is gonna be with us. Um, eventually Pots Hall is gonna, we're not spending all that money for that, right? Um, Public Works is gonna be Public Works, you know? Um. So that's what I'm saying. Public Works has like huge roof too. So. All right. So thank you guys so much. And anything else when it comes to the um, ARPA update or information?
I just have a question, Mayor. Uh, I saw Luke was putting thirty nine thousand. I do appreciate if you make it forty because the estimate was, you know, thirty nine thousand and something. So I don't want to be short for that.
So, Mr. Kamali, can you figure out what the final estimate is so that when we vote, um, we, um.
Sure.
Agreement to put it in, in the, in the legislative meetings on that. But obviously, we need to change this a little bit more, um. We could make that agreement on the voting and then update this document and shooting a fight. Okay? Um, and Luke, can you read the, the final numbers when it comes to where we're between potential and um. What has been allocated as well for the record?
Yep, so we have allocated thus far two point seven million. Um, and we have remaining two point six million. Um, there's a, in a few extra dollars. Um, after our discussion tonight, there's the potential to allocate at the June legislative session an additional one point nine million. Um, and so that would leave us with only six hundred and sixty three thousand left. Um, but again, if you um, uh, if, if we did not um. Uh, fund the program manager, if, you know, we, we have money coming for Richardson Park. Um, that looks like uh, that, that could be um, a mil, closer to a million remaining. Um, so, but keep in mind, everybody, for, for, for where we stand after if we vote on this on, in June. Thanks, everyone.
Sorry, Rob, Luke, Luke, sorry. Isn't it forty K, forty K, not forty nine K? It's because Mr. Mr. Kamali?
Yeah, right now it's forty, but I'm gonna make sure that.
Forty, I thought forty nine. Okay.
Wow, Jared, that's pretty good vision right there.
Thank you. I saw it, but I was gonna keep it.
Sorry. All right.
The, the other thing to keep in mind, guys, is like, we only received half of the money. We are waiting for the other half. The other half is supposed, so ideally come around September, October, right? Uh, somewhere around there. So be fully aware that in the bank, we only have half of the money. Okay, so some of this, we might be able to do it like late, not, not, not this, you know. So it's gonna take a, a while for us to be able to do this, so the money will stay there, right? But it's, it all depends on the second check clearing the account. Okay, so we put a big note on that because unless that check is inside, um. It's not, it's not, you know, certain things wouldn't happen, right? The other thing is to keep also in mind that. The first half of the year are, the money's a little bit lower in our accounts because we're waiting for the tax money to be um. Collected and given to us. Uh, we receive a bunch of, like, we receive two big payments and then a bunch of little ones in between. So that's also to keep in mind. Um, and then the, you know, city manager could recommend uh, the order of how it goes and what are we working on? So that we have a schedule of, you know, if we approve all this. What it looks like. So I think the thing that we're missing on this document, Luke and Mr. Kamali, would be like a timeline. Or where we're at with certain projects, right? And was the like, you know, the. The starting days of some of them. I know there's a lot of things in that little box, but I think adding like. Starting days or like projected days, um, it definitely will help to in the future. Okay? This is a lot, a lot of work. It's very overwhelming. Okay? All right, council, we're ready to jump off for the next item. Thank you. All right, let me see. Moving on to item number ten, discussion of ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty two, amending chapter twenty four. Forces and committees and commissions of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Mariner to add title three. Police review and advisory board and repealing ordinance number oh five twenty twenty. Okay, so this is a discussion. Um, as you guys are aware, we do have an ordinance oh eight dash twenty twenty. That because of um, because of the law changing, uh, certain parts are no longer um. Are no longer under preview and because uh, the legislation did not act upon it. Um, as of June, or July first, uh, they become into effect, correct, Jimmy?
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead.
Correct. Basically, I, after the legislative uh, session, I. Reached out to Lisa and basically. Uh, this is a stripped down version. Uh, unfortunately, the. Copy that's here is not, doesn't include what was uh, struck out, but I put it, if you're interested, I put it in the chat. But basically, if you turn, um, uh. Melissa, if you turn to go down in terms of where we get to the duties. Uh, the, the big change is that. Go further down. Here we go. Uh, yeah, right there. Going up to A, uh, uh, B. No, A, go a little bit higher up. Okay, basically what this does really is just sets a, a committee in the, in the city of residents that would actually. Talk to the chief about the policy, rules and regulations. You know, and how interact with the community and also to kind of go over the. Uh, with the city manager and the uh, the chief before a budget is submitted. That it would be reviewed that with them. Uh, and it takes out a lot of the stuff that was before about. Complaints and charges and, you know, looking into that stuff, which uh. Seems to be in conflict with the county and with the state law, which allows the county to do this stuff. So this. Committee wouldn't really investigate kind of complaints or charges from the community because. Uh, we, we don't have the ability to do that. But it, I think it's a good thing because it would still create a committee. That would, uh, citizens committee that would meet with the chief and talk about the kinds of policies doing and have that kind of discussion. So people have a better sense of how the uh, public safety department works. So. Uh, if the stuff about the appointments uh, is similar, it's a five member board. Two from each uh. Ward, um. I'm not sure where the fifth is from. Um, and one from the apartment complex and uh. So anyway, I'm proposing, I think it's a. It's a kind of a less comprehensive than before, but is both consistent with the. The state law, consistent with the county is doing, but lets our kind of uh. Citizens to have some involvement in terms of what the uh, what the, our public safety department is doing. I don't have any questions, but uh, if you look at the chat, if you really want to know what's stripped out. That's, you know, a lot of this, all you see now is the new language. You don't see what is language. So what we would have to do is we would have to. Uh, either appeal and I'd have to ask Alyssa. Uh, that or actually just amend, I think amend the original ordinance. To take out a lot of the stuff that the uh, we cannot do and just kind of add in the things that we could do. Uh, for a policing board. If there are any questions.
Out of clarity, um.
I can't hear you.
Out of, out of point of, point of information, right? Um, the agenda I didn't.
Selena, your sound is off.
Hold on, can you hear me now? Everything is my voice is off. Can you hear me? Okay, you hear me?
It's still the same.
A little more.
I, I, I have tried to raise as much as I can. Um, and at this point, I think my neighbors are gonna think I'm yelling at them. Um. Uh, Alyssa originally recommended for the oh five twenty one to be strike. And then oh eight twenty two to be created. Are you saying that you don't want, you're not recommending that or? Help me clarify the last statement that you made when you said, uh, you wanted to just update the old one.
Well, I, I would actually ask, uh, when I looked at the language Alyssa did, uh. She struck out everything that was in the. Uh, in the new ordinance. So we should just ask for just an opinion whether we amend this to create the new one or we just uh, repeal that and. And do the other thing. Because uh. What she sent was actually struck out a lot of the old language. So I, I think it's just a technical thing about whether we have to repeal and enact a new one, whether we can just amend the one we did. So maybe we could just ask for uh, an opinion before we have a legislative meeting.
Can you, um, can you email the SCC, all of us so that way we could get that out of the ways to figure out? Uh, so Alyssa has clarity what to put on the agenda.
Sure.
For all of us. And the other thing is like, um, thank you for sending the link. If you could send it via email, that we have access.
Yeah, I, I, it's what I sent you. Everybody has it. I just think for some reason, uh, when I sent it to Alyssa. The only thing that showed up was the new language, but. I'll, I'll send it out again.
Yeah, please, can you send us? We could like actually do whatever.
Right. And I'll ask, I'll ask for an opinion whether we should. Which, which way we should do, whether we have, just amended or whether we should appeal and, and pass a new one.
And what the process is for repealing and, and releasing something new that will help as well. Um, okay, so council, I'm gonna open up the floor to you guys, um. So, um. I definitely wanted to point out that the county is gonna be having, I think they're still in the interview process for the police advisory board for the county. So, um, and this year, from our understanding, M M L, that was one of their priorities. And um. Basically, um, it got knocked down, so it might be picked up next year, but this is one in front of us, um. Is able to fulfill, um, the law. So. Anybody has any questions for Jimmy or you guys want to review the document and then we get feedback from Alyssa what to do next? Um, that will definitely will help. So I'm gonna start this time with Jared, Valerie, Luke.
I, I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you, Jared, Valerie.
Um, no, I think, I mean, this is good. Um, is there just a question? Um, we have an ethics commission. Um, is there no way that this kind of review could be done through that type of commission or? Just, I, I get it separate. I'm just wondering because it's, you know, extra committees and things like that.
I, I, go ahead.
I was gonna say, um, if we were to do it, the ethics could.
I was gonna say, um, if we were to do it, the ethics commission basically focuses a lot of like on, on us, it's more like an election aspect, we will have to, um, redo the resolution for the ethics committee to be able to allow this to happen and one and two, uh, talk to the members to see if this is, you know, because remember, people sign up for, for them to do, um, basically election if it's like a complaint towards the city, right? But I don't know if they're, they signed up to do this part, but the, the resolution that created the ordinance, that created the ethics commission will have to be amended, um, to be able to fulfill, um, these duties. JB, you have anything else to add?
And I just think there's a general sense in our town that people would like to have some kind of citizen involvement with the public safety office, so I, I would really, I, I really would merge the two. I mean, I, I understand we have too many committees, but I think there's this general sense that people would like to have, you know, more involvement with the public safety in the city, so I would keep them separate.
Thank you, Valerie, does that answer your question?
Yep.
All right, thank you so much, Luke.
I have nothing to add, Jimmy, thanks for getting this done and, and bringing this forward, um, I'm supportive, thanks.
Okay, thank you, uh, so much, Jimmy, so I will say yes, send that email to Alyssa, like, send us the updated version of what it looks like and what before, depending what our city attorney says, and what the next steps are, repealing, keeping, updating and what it looks like for us and our end, so that we, we do the proper steps so that we're, um, we're in tune and, you know, as more information comes, you know, for most of the county, um, we will figure out, because it's like, um, in a way, it's new territory, but not because advisory boards are there and their role is, is gonna be mainly like review the ordinance or give suggestions and, and work, um, you know, work, work with, uh, with our, with our team. All right, thank you, Jimmy. So you have homework to do, so it's not out of your, don't check it off yet, Jimmy.
Yeah.
Your priority. You said like two thousand, all right, perfect, um, okay. Oh, wow, guys, pretty good. Presentation of April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two budget work session in public hearing for traffic calming devices and so residential parking. Um, there's certainly document attached to this, Melissa?
Yes, it was included in the package.
Okay, no, I'm saying so you could put it on the screen. Thank you, Melissa. So to summarize, said basically, we had a meeting, we had a lot of people coming to us, right? Um, and, um, the various streets were discussed, there was one that was still a question mark, the other thing, um, Mister Kamali, various of us also pointed out, there is a document that is missing when it comes to the signature, some of them, um, they couldn't verify the signatures, um, and then people have moved, so it's not, it's not up to date as well. And it was like one block, one or two blocks, uh, Luke, correct me which one it is, um, that also needed to be added for a follow-up, um, for a different meeting, so make sure we have all the, the items. So this is the notes for the public hearing, um, and what do you guys want to do with it? Um, if there anything we're supposed to do, is it more just a presentation?
What actually is the agenda item? I can't see the agenda.
Can you go back to the agenda, Melissa?
Sorry.
She had it there, I promise. It's this presentation, so it's just, she's just presenting the minutes and the notes, basically.
Oh, these are just minutes, okay.
Yep, that's it, so review them, if there's any changes, please let Melissa know by Friday, um, and then they'll become approved in June uh, for the legislative meeting, uh, the other thing to keep in mind, um, as we re- review this information, um, Mister Kamali or, um, can you give us the list of the ones that you still need documents for and, um, uh, Luke, can you fill in the part where, um, the streets that were missing? That the residents, um, were also trying to address? Because we might have to do another meeting between one and the other.
I think we, I thought we ended that meeting saying we wouldn't have to do another meeting because.
You have to, for the extra block, because there was no representation, I think it was a presentation for one block, but not the other, I believe. But I think there was one or two that we were still getting clarity on, on where it was and if they needed like the signature or not.
Yeah, it was thirty-first and Taylor, and if they need to get the signatures, um, we need to tell them, but it was the.
It was for the other corner, I think.
It was that same block, the, um.
It's the same thing, it's only one location, thirty-first and Taylor, which is the intersection of, you know, the one that you're just talking about, it look.
Yeah, and then there were, they wanted speed humps by the food forest there.
Yes.
Which was also included with that, and that was also included in their petition that got lost. So do we, do we, Mister Kamali, didn't we start an email chain after that to get their signatures?
Well, we did, uh, and I think Melissa has sent the petition form for, to them.
Okay.
But we have not received any response, and I think we were on the impression, I was on the same impression that if you recall, there was, uh, there was an email going back and forth that, uh, whether they needed or not, so I lost it right there, so. Uh, but we did send the petition form to them.
Okay, and what I'm hearing is we need them to get their signatures, is that?
According to the mayor.
Okay.
According to the law, not the mayor only, so this is not a law I created.
Do you wanna make a comment when you have time?
Go ahead, uh, is it about this item, uh, Jimmy?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think at some point though, on this, we do have to make sure this is gonna, uh, I know we talked about having a, a holistic approach to this, but, uh, some point we have to get back to the, you know, the, whether we're gonna do something or not, either in June at either work session or legislative session, so people doesn't just like go in a black hole. You know, I mean, whether we're gonna have a bigger approach, whether we're actually gonna do something, I think we have to come to some kind of, we're some responsible to the people there to kind of get back to them that what we're gonna do, maybe at the June meeting.
What is a June work session, uh, Luke, were you gonna add something?
I was gonna say, I think Mister Kamali was working on getting a cost estimate for those projects, and so maybe.
Okay, is that where we're at, okay.
Yeah.
The June work session makes sense.
Okay.
It's in my part by calling the hearing, um, Melissa did her part by presenting the, the minutes, right? So Mister Kamali, um, now that this is there and we know like that Mister Kamali has been continuing, you know, still working on it, but that's the other part, uh, from the city that we need to, um, that we need to make sure like the cost estimate, because everything looks beautiful and pretty, but once you put the cost of what it looks like, the other thing our city manager, um, this stated that they haven't been able to find a company to come for five, you know, five to three bumps, right? So that's part of like the issue as well, and if they come, the price increase significantly. So that's part of the problem that we're also facing. Uh, but yeah, so we told them that, you know, so once they get the signature, gives us time, so we call up the discussion in June, and also gives time to Mister Kamali to be able to see what happens, because if realistically we're not gonna be able to bring nobody, or those things are gonna cost three times as much, we might have to find another alternative while we get, um, while we get the traffic study, whether it's like, you know, flashing little lights in the middle or, or, or the little rubber bumps, uh, temporary ones, so that we have something. Um, but, but yeah, so Mister Kamali will get that because, um, you, oh, my poor cat, he's missing me, um, so that, that's part of the things that Mister Kamali is working on right now, um, to put numbers.
Can I say something, man?
Go ahead, Mister Kamali.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, let you know that the R F P is out and we are about to receive the result by May twenty-fifth, on May twenty-sixth, which is a Thursday, we're gonna open the proposal and we definitely gonna select the consultant to do this study. But in meantime, I will get the price for the speed bumps and I can, I can, you know, present it to mayor and council by June work session, if.
Mister Kamali, um, and council, if you guys are in agreement, can you also present a plan B in case there's not? If those bumps are too expensive, where they're gonna cost us three times as much, what could be an alternative to be able to, um,
That's something.
temporarily reduce the traffic, um,
Yeah.
in the meantime, or address the issues that the petitions raised.
Yeah, this is something that the consultant is gonna provide, they're gonna provide a different option for the traffic calming device, so.
Talking about specifically for those locations.
Well, those locations, uh, it has to, you know, it has to be studied by them, because to be honest with you, an expert has to weigh in, whether we're gonna use the speed bump or we're gonna use other traffic calming devices. So it's not, it's not a contractor that can, you know, just suggest something, so that's why we put the R F P out and we need to have this study to be done based on the location, based on the existing condition. The consultant is gonna, is gonna provide the alternatives to the city. So we have to wait, if, if we're looking at something different than the speed bump, it could be a curb extension, it could be, um, signals, as you mentioned it, so, but the speed bumps, if, if the community is looking for the speed bumps, we can get the price on that. But other devices, we need to have a consultant to do this study and based on that, we could use their recommendation and move forward.
Okay, Council, any feedback?
So would we get the, so at the June work session, we would just have the cost of the consultant, not the cost of the traffic calming devices?
No, uh, you're talking about traffic calming devices, are you talking about the speed bump cost only, or do you need, because the traffic calming devices has got so many options in it.
No, I think, just, yeah, I think we were, I think in, we were looking for the cost of, well, we were looking for two things. We were looking for, well, I'll speak for myself, I think I was looking for the cost of the, of the speed bumps themselves at these locations, um, and if it was possible to also have a consultant tell us whether this is something that, that sort of made sense in the long term, but if that's not possible, we can just have the cost of the speed bumps and is it possible to get the cost of the speed bumps by the June work session?
Yes, we could do that, we could get the, uh, cost, but if you're looking for other options, we have to select the consultant and do this study and come up with the results.
Okay, um, Valerie, Jared, Jimmy?
Um, I mean, I would say we should have cost estimates for both, um, just because, you know, it makes sense to, you know, you had residents, um, get signatures for what I think everybody was expecting was speed bumps um, for, for certain blocks, I think, um, it makes sense then to at least put forward like this is what it will cost for speed bumps in these locations, while also getting, you know, quotes and proposals for a, a larger study. Um, I think we, we need to be able to do both, um, and at least present those options to, to people.
Well, I think the, the larger study we're gonna do, I think the question is whether, whether the, we do speed bumps or have somebody figure out if something else is more appropriate for those locations.
Luke, it was Jared's turn.
Sorry.
Um, all right, perfect, I, I think that, you know, for, for, I'll talk, let Jared talk before I say anything, Jared, then Jimmy?
Um, I'm, guys, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm so, I'm so, I'm so COVID gone right now. Um, I, I'm, yeah, no, no additional comments.
Okay, thank you, uh, JB?
I, I have nothing else to add.
Okay, so I will say Mister Kamali for, uh, for the estimate for the other ones, so two means two different things, right? So the studies one and two, um, I will need to have an understanding of like, okay, we picked the, the person, they do the study, how long the study's gonna take? Uh, because if the study and the development of this is gonna take, um, depending what it takes, I might wanna look into, I'm having temporary bumps in some of these locations until we can implement a bigger plan, right? Which will solve two things, to be able to address immediate problem, even if it's now, and also give us time to be able to finish the study without creating too much, um, too much of a permanent solution, so that way if the study says like, we need a rain guarding, a bump out or whatever it is, then that could be addressed then. Right, so, um, I mean, put the information upfront and then like, you know, council will decide what they wanna do, and if they decide that that's not where they wanna go, then they're not gonna go there, but I think that both estimates up, up front will definitely help so that we could start talking and addressing, uh, what, what, um, what it looks like and in the meantime, have the signature for the petition, um, sign and we could figure out what the timeframe is gonna be for one, the study to begin and end, and for any implementation to happen, to figure out if this temporary bumps are gonna be there for two years, one year, three years, or this is gonna be done in a couple of months, and it will ease off some of the, some of these concerns. That's on one, and at the other end, for the parking permits, right? The residential permits, that's something that we might be able to move forward because it's a different solution uh, than they are with the other, uh, permanent items.
Okay.
So I will say we could put forward, um, the residential parking if you guys want in June, so that we could address the one or two that have been requested, as some of the residents are still thinking about it, some of them brought back and they're like, um, uh, you gave us, you know, you as the council, right? Gave us a lot to think about and, um, and we're contemplating what it means to be able to now go and pay those fees or not. So it'll be good for us to have it in, if, if you guys want, in June, so that we could address some of the parking, uh, permits and what it looks like to make sure we have all the signatures and, um, and make the appropriate changes if need be, um, or not. So we have until like here to the next agenda to figure out what you guys wanna do and, and come up with what you guys, um, think is the next steps for it, okay? But we'll go ahead and put it, um, Melissa, put in the agenda, uh, right now, it's a pencil in, so that way we don't forget, um, in case we need to, uh, leave it or take it out, okay? All right, so, uh, Luke, is this your hand to address anything regarding this subject?
Yeah, I just wanna be clear, so we're gonna, we still want, so we want two cost estimates for the June work session, one is for the speed bumps, and then another one is for a consultant for what they would do at these intersections and the cost and timing of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
And then, and also making sure it's a part of the study to know like, how long the study takes to be completed and how, how long will be to implement it, so that will we make better decisions, because if this study takes two years to, to get done, we might need to have a temporary solution for those, um, areas, because they, people do go fast in those areas, right? And I don't know if two more years holding on to certain spaces might be like the safest thing for us to do. But having that information allows us to know like, this could be implemented by September, right? Um, we do have the kids out of school, which is a lot of, um, streets were around the schools, right? And on the other side, how do you call it, um, we could have a better, you know, understanding, and also if they say like, you know, the study will take, you know, a month or two, and then the implementation of like certain areas could be this, we could probably, you know, once they do like the recommendations, right? We could focus on implementing the ones for the petitions first, if that makes the, the most sense, um, and is, and is liable for us to do. Okay, but once we get the information, we'll make that decision in June, okay? Or not, but then we'll have the information in front of us, all right? So I think we beat this horse to death, right? Um, and I'm trying to get you guys out of here, uh, ten twenty-five, uh, for the members of the community, um, I'm moving on to the next item. Bike to work day is May twentieth, um, kids to park day is May twenty-first, community yard sale is June, um, third, Juneteenth celebration is June eighteen, um, and pride parade is June twenty-fifth. Those are some of the events that, uh, we have here until, um, the end of, um, the end of June.
Yeah, I think you at the meeting, is it, there may also be a Juneteenth on the twentieth, too?
This is right now the city events for it, that's what it is at this point. I, the eighteen is the city event, it's been in our calendars.
Okay.
We put in the seventeen, eighteen for about a year now, yeah, since last year. Mm-hmm. Okay, perfect, um, I know you guys are sad to go, but item number twelve, adjournment, can I have a motion on the floor?
So will.
Second.
I was gonna say, you guys are taking forever, it's been probably moved in second, any discussion? Objections, abstentions, hearing now, this fish, this meeting has officially come to an end at ten twenty-six P M. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Melissa, and.
All right, thank you.
The affluent still here.
Thank you, Melissa, thank you, Mister Kamali, and, and.
Jared and.
And we wish you the best.
Thank you, Jared, thank you, Melissa.
Jared.
And congratulations to your wife, Mister Kamali.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations so much.